Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Boca Raton Community Redevelopment Agency. Today is Monday, November 18th, and the time is 1:31 PM. At the request of the City Manager, and due to scheduling needs in connection with the City Council workshop, we're going to temporarily adjourn this meeting and reconvene immediately following the workshop. I now adjourn the CRA meeting.
Good afternoon and welcome to our workshop meeting of the Boca Raton City Council. It is Monday, 1:32 PM. As was stated by our CRA Chair, we're going to resume with our CRA meeting after the end of the workshop. This is done to accommodate our consultants who are here and also to, so we can move forward on what has been the number one strategic priority of the last two years, which is our transit-oriented development or transit-oriented community for our downtown. With that, we'll move on to the agenda. We have no proclamations or presentations today, nor do we have any board interviews, so we'll open the Florida Public Request. Of course, we will have public requests under the CRA portion of this meeting, but if anyone would like to speak now on workshop matters or council matters, please do so. Last call for public request. We will close the time for public requests. All as council members, if there are any items they wish to review for tomorrow night's regular agenda. Seeing no one come forward, we will move on to the next item, which is future agenda matters, items of public concern. We have none. And we'll turn to City Manager reports. We have an update on the government campus redevelopment coming. Before I recognize the City Manager, I just wanted to frame this a little bit. We've been discussing about this priority for the last couple of years. It has been a number one priority for the City Council for the last two years. We're very pleased to have already had two unsolicited offers from some substantial potential partners, and I'm going to suggest at the conclusion of this that we move forward with the public solicitation process, but public discussion process, so that we can get more clarity, have a defined timeline, have the public weigh-in, we should, and then be proceeding there. But I think it's a great sign that we've already had substantial interest from some major people who've been listening to what we've said, and I think they have been bearing in mind all of the comments we've made over a series of meetings, including in August, where we discussed this. We may give a little more refinement to this, but at the end of the day, I've got a timeline in mind, I think, to try to get this on a 60-day-ish timeline. It may fall a day or two short because of a weekend, but move forward. With that, Mr. Brown, I've telegraphed where I want to go, but hopefully that's helpful. Your meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Andy Lucasic, Deputy City Manager, is going to make a presentation on where we are with the government campus redevelopment planning and also discuss visioning for, from you all, about what we will be looking for from our proposers.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you, Mayor. Council members, good afternoon. Andy Lucasic, your Deputy City Manager. So, Mayor did a nice job of kind of introducing this particular item, so I won't go into the background, but we do have two unsolicited P3 proposals for the development of the governmental campus. I want to talk a little bit about what it is that we've received, what that's triggered in terms of our administrative policies and the process that we're recommending that we move forward with, recognizing that at our November 4th meeting, council articulated the need to think about a condensed timeframe in terms of the process that we would utilize to try to select and contract with a proposer, and then have a little bit of a conversation related to the visioning, as Mr. Brown had mentioned, trying to get some high-level comments from you all, high-level observations and definition for what it is that we want to see on the governmental campus site. Okay? So I'm going to go ahead and start jumping into it. For those who aren't familiar with the area, we're talking about the governmental campus, so it's generally this area west of Northwest Second, of course, admitting the private properties. And as we're talking about the campus plan, we're also referring to a couple of properties that are east of Northwest Second, so the city owns property, obviously, the library and some property adjacent to Bright Line. Now, in all of our conversations, we've not necessarily talked about redeveloping the library. We've not really entertained that, but as we've had conversations in the past, we've tried to make sure that we have enough freedom for creativity as we possibly can. So we've not articulated that, not encouraged it, but with a solicitation, not sure what we would come up with. Parking lot parcel south of the library, the base building, building administration, code enforcement building, and then the police station. Okay? So all told, plus or minus 30 acres that are being concerned for redevelopment, in part to take advantage of the fact that the Bright Line Station is there, in part because we have some facilities that need to be replaced, and this is a good mechanism to use. The P3 strategy is a good mechanism to use to replace some of that aging and stressed infrastructure in terms of capacity. So again, we received two unsolicited proposals, one from Related Ross and the other a joint proposal from Terra Group and Frisbee Group. Both submitted what we refer to as qualifying projects within our administrative policy. So they have a really, they both described what we have in our, as a qualifying project, which is a walkable, transit-oriented, community-type development that would facilitate the replacement of some of the municipal facilities that are currently on the site. So they've both submitted. We received those proposals in late October, and we've started doing some initial review of those proposals. They both contain various levels of detail related to the development plans in the area, talked about the replacement of existing municipal facilities, and they talked about the development team's relative qualifications. Last week, staff and our consultants, CBRE, met with the proposers to receive any additional information that they wanted to present, as well as talk to them about any questions that they might have. Oh, and I have to apologize, I neglected to do this. Clarissa Willis is with us, Clarissa V. Waif. She's Vice President with CBRE, so she's been with us along the way as we've been starting to go through this process. In our conversations with the proposals, both understood that there's an expectation that we'll go through some sort of competitive selection process or a public bidding process, which is a term that's used within the P3 statute as well as within our administrative policy. So in our conversations, we've discussed the need to go through that competitive selection process, and there's an understanding that that's going to occur. So the receipt of the proposals really triggered the process that we're entering into now, and that is a process to understand, a process to determine how we're going to move forward with the proposals. So if you look at the P3 statute, and again, our administrative policy is really based heavily on the P3 statute, so there's not a ton of daylight between the two. But if you look at the P3 statute, it really gives you two pathways to select a proposal and negotiate a contract, or before you select a proposal and negotiate a contract. So one is if, for instance, we have a proposal that is meeting our goals and objectives, really accomplishes what we need, the city could make a determination that it will move forward with that particular proposal. So you can conduct a series of public hearings, publish findings about the project and how it meets the goals and objectives of the city, and publish the findings in the Florida Administrative Register. So there's a methodology that you could use to accept a proposal without going through a competitive selection process or without a public bidding process. The second pathway is going through a public bidding process, and again, that's what it's referred to in the statutory provisions, where there's a notice published in the Florida Administrative Register, there's a notice included in the, in a newspaper of general circulation, and it essentially identifies that proposals were received and we're going to accept other proposals on the same project. There's a timeframe in which those proposals can be received under the statutory provisions, anywhere between 21 and 120 days. And again, that's what's described as the public bidding process. Staff and CBRE are both recommending that we move forward with some sort of competitive selection process. We're using our city's administrative policy as a framework to move forward, and again, very similar to what's in Florida statute. So as we, as we go through that process, we're talking about using an offering memorandum. And we've used this terminology because it's less restrictive than a RFP, as a fore-instance. So an RFP is going to be very tightly defined. I have a lot of provisions in it that'll say, "We're expecting X, Y, and Z to happen, and you'll do it this way with these materials," et cetera. What we're trying to accomplish with the offering memorandum is have a very high-level discussion with potential proposers that'll give an idea about what it is that we want to accomplish, what sort of feel we want on the site, what sort of environment we want to create, and see how the proposers respond. The offering memorandum will include any requirements or any assumptions that the proposer should follow. It'll have a description of the submittal and evaluation process, and we'll discuss any fee structures that are going to be a part of that process. During today's conversation, we're going to be looking for some guidance and assumptions related to municipal services and our municipal facilities. That'll happen during our visioning conversation. Next, I want to walk you through a couple of marketing materials and kind of walk you through that process and some of the options that we have in terms of timeframes going forward. So CBRE is already doing work trying to get us ready to go and make sure that as we go through the competitive selection process, they're engaging the development community to make sure that we get the best opportunity to get creative proposals submitted, just to make sure that if there's something that we weren't thinking about or somebody else wasn't thinking about, we've got a better opportunity of grabbing it. So they've already established this pre-marketing material, and as soon as we get the direction from council to move forward, we'll go ahead and we'll release this information. So this just gives you some idea of what that email solicitation, that pre-marketing document will look like, gives you some idea what sort of language that we're using within that, within that marketing material as well. The offering memorandum template, so they've already developed a series of templates. I just grabbed one that looked, looked good, but it gives you an idea about what the look and feel of the template will be, and it gives you an idea about the table of contents, what sort of things will be included within the offering memorandum. So the guidance that we need from you is related partially to timing, process and timing, but I know timing is an issue that we've been talking about for the past couple of weeks. So CBRE and staff, we've been recommending the use of a 90-day offering timeline. The reason that we're doing that is to try to make sure that we have the opportunity to promote the project as much as possible, give potential proposers the opportunity to respond, and again, enhance our ability to get creative solutions to the goals and objectives that we have in our strategic plan. I will, I will mention that towards the tail, tail end of our timeline, this is going to work, towards the tail end of our timeline, we'll begin a public engagement process. So once we receive, the plan is, once we receive a proposal, proposals, we make a final selection in terms of who we're going to be working with. We'll, we'll ask that development team to work with us and in the community to try to solicit feedback on the benefits of that particular plan and just be able to have a better understanding of what the community appreciates, what things they have some concerns about, and so forth. But it gives them something to react to as opposed to just reacting to a blank sheet of paper. We've also developed a 60-day offering timeline. That's really in response to the need to provide a condensed timeframe by which we'll do the solicitation. Still gives us the opportunity to get good proposers in, just makes the work a little, little more rushed, but we can still get you a good product with 60-day offering. So before we leave today, one of the things that we're going to want to hear from you is what that timeframe should look like in 60 or 90 days acceptable. I'm going to fly through these next couple of slides, largely because this is really more of the opportunity for you to give us and CBRE and probably the proposers as well, some feedback. You've already done a really good job on a couple of occasions talking about what it is that you want to see as relates to development of the government campus. But as we do our, as we do an offering, we want to make sure that we not only can reflect the things that we've already heard, but make sure that there's nothing that we've missed. So just as base documents and base information, I wanted to share a couple of things. So you've, you've spent some time describing in the strategic plan what it is that you wanted to see on the government campus. So this excerpt is from the strategic plan from 2023. Spent a lot of time on this language, and I know you thought about what, what words you were going to include in this description. So this is a good springboard for thinking about what, what we want to talk about within an offering document. Two things in particular that we need a little more specific direction on, City Hall. So we, we know that the current City Hall, not only is it older, but it also is lacking capacity. So we've talked a little bit about, well, what do we do in terms of that capacity for staff? Do we construct everything on the current government campus, or do we move portions of our uses off-campus, or do we move everything off-campus? So we want to have a little bit of a conversation, a little understanding from you as to what direction we should be heading in. What, what are you, what are your general thoughts in terms of what we should be telling proposers as we think about City Hall? Next, another really important concept is the police station or the police department building. That building, I think it was constructed in the mid-'80s. It is under capacity. I think we've had, we've added about double the number of staff to the police department since that facility was constructed. Really doesn't provide for the level of service that we're trying to deliver to the community. So we want to, we've been proposing at a staff level to relocate that particular function to city-owned property just east of Spanish River Library. So it's city-owned property, that's just east of the Spanish River Library. So we want to make sure that if that's something that we're pursuing, and we're recommending it, is it acceptable to include that into our offering memorandum? So we, we just need to make sure that we get on the same page as it relates to the police station. And then lastly, because we're just trying to get to a high-level description within our offering memorandum, I don't suggest that we get very, very specific in terms of exactly what you want to see downtown, because we do want to allow for creativity, but as we're, as we're talking about those high-level objectives, if we can use some of the, and now the, and by the way, this, these bullet points are essentially, it's essentially a list of comments that either we, as staff, or CBRE have heard in past dialogue or individual conversations with council and the management team. But if you can use any of these examples to help explain what it is that we want to try to accomplish, what the feel should be, what the environment is supposed to be, that will be helpful for staff and CBRE as we're starting to populate that offering memorandum to make sure that whatever proposers are out there that might be interested, that aren't really aware of the project, that they have an idea as to where we're trying to, where we're trying to go. So there are two pages of bullet, bullet points for you to, you know, talk about or think about. Now, I can leave this up so we can flip back and forth. So a couple of things that we need some help with. One is process and timeline. You know, we've given you two suggestions, 90-day or 60-day, recommending 90-day, but understand that the condensed timeframe is important to the council. And the details of City Hall and Police Department, you know, what, what should we make sure that we're discussing in terms of assumptions in the offering memorandum? And any of the high-level conversation that we can have to describe the environment and the feel that you want on the governmental campus. So Mayor, I guess with that, I'll turn it over to you, and we can start having that dialogue.
Thank you very much. I'll jump right in. You can go back, go back a couple of slides from mine, I think, just leave it, go back. Leave it there, the 60-day. Let's go there. First, thank you. As we said at the last meeting, we wanted a shorter timeline. All of our heads were nodding at 90-day. We were nodding negatively at 90. I'd say 60 would be the outer range. 60 days from today happens to fall on Friday, January 10th. I'd say maybe make it 59 days. Here's what I'm going to throw out. Thursday, January 9th for the responses, still gives us time to converse, and we've had some conversations with the first two people in here. The reason of that, it gives staff at least one day to look at it, so it's not going right in the weekend, and then, since we would be under a, if that's the conclusion of the period, we would have a cone of silence apply. We would not have oral conversations with the proposers who've come in or any others. But it's right before council meetings on the 13th and 14th, which might give us a chance to at least have some initial discussion, ask questions, and I think that's a good way, that's a good segue into that timing. On this timing here, I, I understand CBRE can do a tighter timeline here, because I think, and if they're working with us the way I envision, which is providing feedback to us on the different financial levers that might be pulled, that they don't need all of a whole month-plus for, you know, financial technical review, they'll be looking at things. They don't need another month to evaluate rank and shortlist, we won't have that many, and that weekend of presentations well before April. There may be some time, obviously, for development agreement, and if there's an interim or final agreement, that will take longer, but I think between February and April, we can shorten timelines, and I would like them to at least talk about their ability to do so, because that's my understanding, and I'm seeing at least ahead, not a little. So we'll, we'll get to that in a minute. Mr. Lucasic asked some other questions. In terms of my money, or, you know, my vote, my, my position, yes, I think we need a City Hall. We said this all in August, but I'll reiterate. We need a City Hall that has public-facing features in our campus. That will be a centerpiece of it. That's why we're doing this. Some of the back office might ultimately go to a second site. That's more for staff to determine. I don't think that's a requirement. If they want to put that in, fine, but definitely that space. I would say you have a flex space for council. We are using this space. This space can be used when we're not meeting the other 160 hours a week. It can be used for other purposes. And done right, a building that's a centerpiece of a mixed-use proposal, then you can have a vibrant community space for groups, for private events to rent out, and it's malleable. Nobody's building just that whole auditorium anymore for such limited use. Police station, fine. Staff wants to move it, that's fine. And I really don't think that's up to the, I think it's just clarifying for the proposer, yes, we're eventually going to move this, so that may be in play and create more of a vibrant space for residents. The whole goal here is a transit-oriented community, or at least a downtown walkable community, that is not just closed at 5 o'clock on Friday and is a vacant wasteland in terms of activity. Well, police station is not very active for the public by design, so moving it off-site helps free up more public activity for everyone's benefit. I would be very broad. I think we've discussed this quite a bit in August, and I'd rather have a shorter discussion today. All the things I thought we came to consensus on are already out there. I think two proposers who've heard us are already out there, and I think anyone who's been paying attention and is likely to be a good partner here already knows this, so I don't feel the need so much to go through every point on slides 12 and 13 and 14. I think that's out there. And I think the whole point of the P3 process under Florida Statute 255 is to leave it to offer innovation, flexibility, and timeliness. So the more prescriptive we are, the less we're getting to that, the heart of that process. The more we leave it out there, we may be wowed by what comes out there, and I'll throw in an example. Not something I'd envisioned, not, but it occurred to me today. You're all familiar with the Sphere in Las Vegas? I don't think we're going to see a Boca Raton Sphere, but that's a really transformative, creative space. If someone wanted to come along, I wouldn't want to preclude them, because we said we had to put, you know, this, that, or the other thing here. Not looking for it, don't think they have Madison Square Garden Corporations coming here, but it's just an example. So I think we give them the framework, community center, City Hall space, community space downtown, knowing the police station's probably moving off-site, and then respond to all the other things. I think we'll get a robust mix of uses. And once proposers come in, if we like some from column A, some from column B, there's nothing stopping us from having that conversation, because unless and until we enter into a final, signed, comprehensive agreement, we don't have to do a single thing. So there is no obligation on us, so the more we leave it out there with these parameters, I think the better, and as a result, we can probably get that offering document out on the street. I think it's great that CBRE wants to get that extra push into the public for, you know, to make sure it's out there, but I think anyone worth their salt already knows it, so I'd rather not let that kind of perfection of a document hold up things. I want to get this out there, move, because we've been waiting, and the moment is now. With that, who would like to speak?
Mayor, I just have a question. I agree with everything that you've said, but I have a question on, on all these things, on the offering memorandum. on the offering memorandum. Is there a reason that we have to do an RFP or an offering memorandum? Can we just advertise with certain, certain parameters, like high-level parameters? And is there a reason we have to do an OM?
I think the answer is, I'll ask, I'll ask staff to, I think the answer is no, but I think it was more the desire to try to give clarity, but if we're happy with high level, I'm sure that staff and CBRE can just work in something shorter. The glossiness, you can have fewer glossy pages. Mr. Brown, you want to add anything there?
I think basically they're the same thing. The offering memorandum is an advertisement, basically. So we're really talking about doing something that gives people the parameters that they need to follow, the, the process steps they need to follow to send us something, and then with the basic high-level that we've just discussed. It's really basically the same thing.
So if I'm hearing you right, Mr. Brown, I think the short answer is no, we don't have to do one, and we can keep it brief and just get it out there.
Yes. But we can keep it brief and get it out there, but they're really, fundamentally, they're the same thing in terms of what we're asking for.
Okay. I was just trying to figure out what the difference was between just advertising and doing an offering memorandum, but it's the same thing. Just trying to cut out as much red tape as we, I don't want to add any to it. So if it's the same thing, and we can just write an advertisement with what we need, then we just do that.
Yes, they're the same thing. I, I don't know how to be clearer.
Maybe, maybe we should just call it like an advertising notice. Maybe, maybe that nomenclature, maybe, maybe that's just, just a way to bridge the gap.
Right.
Ms. Drucker.
Thank you, Mayor Singer. So you put it, you pretty packaged the information that we've been discussing for over two years. As a city, everybody out there knows Boca Raton. I just had the opportunity to spend a week in Tampa, representing the city at the National League of City Conference, and I have a presentation later. We were showcased, we were interviewed by, I was interviewed by Bloomberg, Bloomberg philanthropy on all the work that we're doing with mobility and connectivity, twice, panels. Everybody knows Boca Raton. I was telling Mr. Brown, I couldn't get this video up, but there are all the cities being named across the country, really, and all of a sudden, it's like Boca Raton, Florida, and everybody was like, how did you get your name up there? And I said, I didn't know it was going to be up there, because everybody knows who we are, because we are on the map. So we don't need to market ourselves that much, because we're here. And we have two proposals that came in with a lot of things that we've been asking for, which is innovative, bold, and transformative. So to me, we have two very good proposals. I'm okay with trying to get more, but those two proposals are very acceptable. They came with a lot of information. And throughout this process, we're always going to have the input of the council, the input of staff, and the input of the community. So for me, my personal opinion, I would like the 60-day offering. We don't need to put some glossy thing to get people to come to Boca Raton. Just look at how many people come to Boca Raton. So I, I feel like that part we could do away with, and we could shorten the timeline. And if people are listening, we've been asking for proposals for years. So if they're not submitting, it could be because maybe they don't think that we're going to get the work done, because we've been having this conversation for 15 years. So let's stop having the conversation. Let's try to work on a shorter timeline, and let's start getting things moving so that we could get the government center built.
Mr. Mayor, please.
Thank you. I agree with my colleague's sentiments here. I guess before I say some specific things, we have been talking about this for two years. If there are partners in the development community that don't know that we have been talking about this for two years, and we have to market to them, I don't know if I want them submitting to us, frankly. I think everybody knows. This is something that has been our highest priority, and we've had some significant conversations about it. In terms of the actual process here, I've had significant conversations with staff, and obviously, our city attorney can opine here, but I believe what we have a requirement to do is publish in the administrative register the fact that we are about to go into this process, and we have to open it up for a certain number of days after the date of publication, X number of days after the date of publication. Mr. Kahler, do you agree that that is the procedure I'm reading in the policy?
I agree, except that it's, it's not a requirement of the statute. The legislature made it optional for, for this body, but yeah, so the staff's recommending that you do engage in that notice process, and you correctly stated it's got a range of 21 days to 120 days.
From the date of publication.
Correct.
That's right. And then, yeah, pursuant to the mayor's comments, yeah, I, I agree, it should be very high-level. Everybody knows what we have been talking about for so long here, number one. Number two, as the mayor correctly pointed out, this is, there is an interim phase where we are not committing to anything. We are just working with the first-ranked proposer, once we do rank them, if there's more than one submission, after the closing window. We are then working together towards an interim agreement, which is really the design. So in terms of getting specifics, Mr. Lukasik, I, I agree, it should be very, very high-level, just on a summary of the types of uses that we're considering, but nothing else, I think, is required, because in the interim phase, we will start doing a little more detailed planning, okay? And then we'll get some, start getting some costs and some budgets. And I am sure that preliminary costs and budgets will start impacting our decisions, okay? Because if certain things cost a lot to, to build in terms of government campus, we might say, okay, maybe those should be someplace else, like some of the staff, or something like that. But likewise, it should be very high-level, because we'll start to answer these questions as we, as we plan, and we're not, like I said, we're not, we're not confined to, to anything here. You know, we made mistakes in the past with trying to do our own modified things in certain ways, and, you know, in this particular instance, we have a statute that has been worked on by the entire Florida legislature. It's been used several times. I'm very much in favor of using as much as possible the, the policy that's put in place by our government, and, and I do respect the staff's administrative policy. It's, it's very, very detailed to help flesh that out with some of the nuances that we're allowed to do here, and we are allowed to add some of those nuances in. So I think we have a very good process here. We just need to keep it very, very high-level, and not, this, this should not be turning into an RFP. It is just opening the competitive window, because we have received, right? The word accepted, you know, is kind of a misnomer, you know? We're accepting receipt is what we're doing. We've accepted receipt of two proposals, and we're opening up that window for others, but it should be very high-level, you know, and not more than a few, you know? Like I said, you wanted some glossy pictures, fine, but it, it doesn't need to be anything more than that, and was required by the statute. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know there's many members of the audience who are here to talk about or listen in on other items and not this, so let's just, for clarity, because I want to make sure that everyone who's been paying attention to us, and some have been up to now, know what we're talking about here. Really what we're talking about is identifying a potential partner who we may work with in the future to help redevelop our government campus. And so we're at the stage now where people have raised their hand, saying we'd be interested to talk, and that triggers, and I think is a sensible choice by us, to open up a competitive public process to allow anyone else to raise their hand to say, yes, we'd like to talk to. And in that way, I think a 60-day period of time is a sensible one, because this is not some secret. This is not classified information that the city of Boca has been having these discussions, and that the development community, I'm sure, is aware of that. But let me just countenance that by saying, I think it's very important that we do this responsibly, not suggesting that a 60-day timeline doesn't do that. But my point is, this is going to be, this is a very, very big decision. Probably one of the biggest decisions that we will ultimately be making when we're up here. So I wanted to make sure that the public knows that we're going to be doing it in a responsible, not rushed way. Again, I'm not saying we need to put the brakes on here. But in this one question, how long should we leave open the question to people who are in the development community wanting to engage with us? 60 days, I think, is a suitable length of time for that. They're aware of that. If they're interested, they can raise their hand. 60 days is plenty of time for them to do that. But as time goes on, I understand the desire to want to truncate the timetable, and that makes sense, I get it. We have been talking about this for a while. But at the same time, I think it's important that we do so, and we make every decision responsibly and not rushed, okay? So that's how I'm going to be approaching it. I want to make sure that this is done responsibly. So on the one question as to between 60 and 90 days, 60 days is suitable, in my view. I can go through a couple of the other action items or requests by staff for clarification on how we want to approach some of these things, but it didn't seem like that was necessarily the time for it right now. I, I can do that, and then we can all do that. There's a couple of items that Mr. Lukasik identified that he said the staff wanted input on. Do we want to just engage that now and then move on?
Sure, that's fine. I think I already weighed in on those, so if anyone else wants to, you can.
Mr. Mayor.
Please. Mr. Thompson, if you still want to, since you kicked it off?
Just on a couple of those items. I think I agree that there's no need necessarily to have the entire kit and caboodle of city staff working at City Hall. If there is another location that makes more sense for that, that's fine, but I do think that the public-facing component ought to be downtown. Historically, that's where it's been. We should have some space for council meetings to be there, perhaps some flexibility for other things there, too. It doesn't need to be the auditorium, as I think I heard. I agree that the police station, while very much in need of being rebuilt, doesn't need necessarily to be rebuilt down there. So the staff suggestion for next to the library on Spanish River makes a lot of sense. Location of 95, for example, I think, would make it more accessible and maybe more convenient. Let me see some of the other items that came up. The library got mentioned. I was there when that was opened, like, that's relatively new. I'm not sure we need to be in the business of knocking that down. I think the library is beautiful, it should stay there. I thought that, I guess I thought that was obvious.
I concur. I'm not even sure why we were there, but...
Yeah, no, I, agreed.
Let, yeah, let no one make, if I may interject, let no one make a mistake that's even under discussion.
No, no. I'm, I'm interested, like, I think some of my colleagues have said, are interested in, I'm excited at what has been proposed. It's a great starting point, but I think the idea is, let's make sure that everyone who wants to have a discussion about that in the community can do so as part of this public process, so we should do that. 60 days is sensible, I think, for this one thing, but they, I, I urge us to be, I know we, we have a desire to get this thing done and have it get done quickly, but I think we need to balance that with making sure that's done responsibly, with plenty of time for public input, plenty of time for people to weigh in. I'm sure we're going to do that, but I just wanted to make sure that you all know that that is, that's of immense importance to me. Thank you.
Ms. Anklis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll get back to other points besides the difference between an OM and an RFP. I agree that, are we at 60 days or 59 days, I think you proposed?
Yeah, we can call it 60, including today for the round numbers, but I think Thursday makes more sense than Friday. If it's Friday, then we should discuss it on the following Tuesday, either way.
Okay, okay. So that is the timeline that I would also agree with. I think that that is enough time for, for anyone else to come forward. They've had, they've had the time, they've had the information, they've had the chance to reach out to any of us and to speak to any of us, and, and honestly, I, I thought that a couple more people were going to come forward, so maybe we'll see them come forward, and we'll have those, we'll each have our discussions with them, and, and they'll get to, they'll get to see what we are thinking about with, with everything else. But I think the timeline is good, and from there, once the, we reach the deadline, I mean, I think we absolutely will be responsible with every decision we make, and, and as was noted in the beginning, and I think even in the little, on the OM, yeah, on the exciting opportunity coming soon, this is a once-in-a-lifetime generational opportunity to partner with the city and the CRA. It is, and I take that very seriously, and I'm excited about this, but not so excited that we won't be responsible about it. So 60 days is good as far as everything on Mr. Lukasik's list, the, especially the police department, I agree, we should move it out west, but also, we need a presence in the downtown of some kind. Library, of course, not being discussed right now. We need, I think we still need the community center downtown, mixed-income housing, of course, affordable housing, workforce housing, that type of thing, parking, the banyan trees that, you mentioned those here. I would like to see them stay, and, and some kind of recreation and a lot of green space, whatever we can do down there that people will want to come to the downtown, walk around, have it feel connected and not in a silo from the other areas of our downtown. We're also going to be discussing Palmetto Park Road later, and we're going to be, you know, we had something exciting happen at Meiser Park today, so it's all of our downtown, so it all needs to feel connected. So I know we can have those, that discussion, or those discussions as we move forward with this, but I, I think, keep it very, very high-level, only put in the advertising what we need to put in there. As Mayor Singer said, somebody may come to us with something we're not even thinking about right now, and I don't want to get too nitty-gritty and squash any of those ideas. So, thank you.
Ms. Drucker.
Thank you, Mayor Singer. So I agree with what the colleagues have already said. I agree we're going to do this responsibly. Obviously, the public input is our number-one thing that we go after, and we're going to allow enough time for that. Public is already giving us input, so it is not that we need the plans for them to give the input. The plans are already out, and people have already started to approach us. But as we, as we think about this downtown, so again, I just spent some time up in Tampa. They have about 300,000 improper city Tampa residents. So I was putting in 16,000 steps. Mind you, most of my time was at a convention center, but everything, the way that they have built, and the, the reason I was excited to be at this conference was because I was able to see how they have reimagined their downtown, their Riverwalk, connected everything with mobility and connectivity, and I'll give more about that when I do the presentation later this afternoon. But when we think of this area, we want it to be that. I would love to see it be the way that they've done it. They've done this in Atlanta, they've done this in many other cities even smaller than ours. Government center should be, obviously, the City Hall, we should be there governing. We should have mixed-income housing. We should have retail space, but an area that's being used. So the City Hall in Tampa is across the convention center area, and it's all, all day, everybody's working together. They have the stadium for, I guess, the Tampa Lightning, and they were there this week when I was there. So it was just interesting to see how that city functioned, and moving people around safely and efficiently, and everything was open for business, and there was a lot of young professionals, and just like a very good feel. I, I can only, and they don't have a train, they have a trolley, they have a car that's on like a, like an electrical car rail, rally, whatever they call it. But it was just very interesting to see how it looked, and I was thinking, I want our city to look something like this. I mean, it's going to even look better, because we're Boca, so Boca's always better, but it was just nice to be able to see that, and what they've done in the last, you know, five to 10 years in their downtown. In terms of the police station, that makes sense, having a substation, which is what they have in a lot of cities these days. We are growing city. We're adding more development in certain areas. We're going to need more police. We're going to need more stations. We're going to need more fire. So I'm, I'm in agreement with that as well. Open space, of course, pedestrian experience, you're preaching to the choir. I think you put in here, Skybridge pedestrian cross. Again, if we keep it high-level, we'll get a lot of information. The proposals that already came out were really, really innovative, and we've also looked at other cities that have gone through some of the government center redo's in our own state, so you can look at some of those, and they are incorporating a lot of the stuff that's already here on our list. Incorporating Meiser architecture, I'm kind of surprised to see that, to be honest, because six months ago, we passed an ordinance that we want to get away from that and be more, less Meiser. So I don't know why we were having that discussion. Transportation programming, of course, we want to include last-month service, and recreation, we should have recreation opportunities on there as well. So I think I hit the ones. I think I hit most of them. Yep.
Concur. Mr. Wiger.
Yes. No, I agree with my colleague's comments. We've been talking about it, presenting about it for many, many, many months, and, you know, I think it's important for the public to, you know, also, like I said, there'll be continuous opportunities to weigh in, but we should reflect on what we're looking to do here, which is, we're looking to not only get a developer that is, has a vision for what they think the downtown can look like, we're looking for a developer who's qualified, significantly qualified financially, to do this. significantly qualified financially, to do this. This is a situation where current proposers have already spent probably hundreds of thousands of dollars of their own trying to get their idea of what we think of the vision is out there. So certainly, you know, the thing we have to reflect on here is that this is not the city spending its own money planning, this is a public-private partnership where the development community will be spending their dollars planning, so certainly it's not an economic giveaway. It's one where both parties will benefit, just as Meizner Park, you know, we talked about it several weeks ago, you know, I don't think anyone can imagine Boca Raton without Meizner Park, and likewise, there's an opportunity for that where we do our government center. We've talked about moving the non-public-facing things out of the downtown, we've talked about that often. Again, in 1960, when the city was built, that was the center of the city. Well, obviously, the city expanded and next, expanded and next again, and so now the center of the city, the geographic center, really is a right-around brick. So if the police station moves to the Spanish River location, it's basically in the center of the city, potentially it could reduce response times, it's near two interchanges, which will be beneficial as well, and there's land there. Yeah, absolutely, whether we call it a precinct or a substation, you know, we can have a presence here as well, and that happens in cities that expand, you know, but certainly, I think it's, you know, an approach that other cities that expand do similarly. But again, I just want to reiterate that if you look at our administrative policy, when these proposers come in, we are not even choosing a plan. We are choosing concepts of a plan. We're really choosing which party we want to work with, and then the interim agreement, which is also not binding, will include project planning and development, design and engineering, and environmental analysis, of course, surveying, financing for the project, geotechnical services, and the timing for all these things. So when we talk about the time, and of course, doing this responsibly, just choosing the party that we want to preliminarily work with in the next 60 or 90 days, or, you know, however long it takes to get everything done, is certainly reasonable. But again, the interim agreement, I can assure you, will take significantly longer than 60 to 90 days to work on the true project planning of a project of this nature and the public input, and everything that goes along with a project of this size will be significantly longer than that. The idea is to get that process started, because we've been talking about it for long enough. So like I said, it's certainly multiple layers of milestones here that are making sure that this is a responsible public project, and I think that's why the state government passed the statute as it did. So I'm in favor of it. Thanks.
Well, thank you. I think we're all of mine, and before I make the motion to direct staff and to do what we've said, I just want to ask CBERE if they can come up for a moment, because now hopefully they've heard us here. Can you respond to three quick points, please? First, the timeline, because I understand you can tighten this a little bit, pretending on, you know, potentially if we work together and, you know, hopefully keep you in the loop, as I would want us, that's the whole point, on some of the terms, maybe that February to April timeline can be a little more condensed. Second, you've heard that now, you know, the advertisement doesn't need to contain as much, so hopefully that cuts back on some time, and just want to make sure that works for you all and you can get that out. And then third, public input. You talked about it, or it was talked about more at the end. I think we can probably include that. Could you just talk about more how we can get that earlier, because it's very important to us, and how we keep that moving forward?
Sure. So beginning with the timeline, we are completely flexible with the timeline. We can work as quickly as you need us to work in order to get the proposals in and get them reviewed and feedback back to the council, so we can move forward in choosing a developer to work on this project. So certainly 60 days is preferential, but we can do it shorter if we need to. So I just want to make sure that's clear. With regard to advertising, the email blasts that you see in the presentation, it's ready to go, so we can, if we get the green light today, we can blast it out tomorrow. Out to over 25,000 developers and brokers in our database across the world, so we'll make sure it gets significant exposure across all lines of communications. And with regard to public input, we can incorporate that into, revise the timeline to incorporate that into the timeline and get that done as soon as possible. Once a proposer or proposers, we have a short list of proposers that can make presentations, and I'm assuming you want possibly oral presentations from proposers as well?
I think that would help, yes. And I see Mr. Brown nodding yes. I see my colleagues nodding yes. Yes.
Yes. So once we can decide or determine which proposers would be on the short list, we can certainly schedule with your, you know, with your scheduling, oral presentations, and we can then move forward with public input at that time.
Very good. All right, councilmembers, any questions to CBERE? Then, maybe to land the plane, I will, I move that we direct staff in accordance with the city's administrative policy for managing unsolicited public-private partnership proposals and Florida statutes 255.065, to proceed with the public bidding process for the qualifying projects described in the two unsolicited proposals received by the city, and provide that the notice will state that the city has deemed the proposals to be qualifying projects, and that the city will accept other proposals for the same project, and for the direct staff to set the timeframe for accepting proposals to be 60 days inclusive of today, which would conclude on Thursday, January 9, 2025. Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any further clarity needed, Mr. Brown?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, well, good.
Quick question. So are we getting the green light to go ahead and blast out the advertisement tomorrow?
Mr. Brown?
Yes, with a little bit of further final review in the morning.
Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you. All right, good. Well, colleagues, thank you. We're, thank you to staff, too, and thank you to CBERE. We're moving along what people have said they wanted to see, so that's good. Mr. Brown, still, your report.
Nothing else this afternoon, ma'am.
Thank you. City attorney reports?
I have no report.
Thank you. Councilmember reports, start on my left.
No report.
Thank you. Ms. Anklis?
No report. Thank you.
Ms. Drucker.
I have my NLC report that I'm going to do at workshop, right? Because workshop is a special meeting.
This is workshop. We'll go back to CRA, but if the chair will indulge you then, you could do it then if you want, it's up to you.
However you guys want it.
Madam Chair.
That's fine.
Okay. So I'll hold a report to the CRA.
Very well. Mr. Wigder?
Why's I'll hold a report for CRA?
Thank you, and I have no report, so this will conclude our workshop meeting at the time of 2:24. We will resume the suspended CRA meeting in a moment.
Good afternoon again. I am now going to reconvene the Community Redevelopment Agency meeting that was temporarily adjourned earlier, and will now proceed with the agenda. So the first thing we're going to do, would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Simmons, would you please call the roll?
Chair Anklis.
Here.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Thankful to be here.
Commissioner Drucker.
Here.
Commissioner Singer.
Here.
Commissioner Wigder.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, are there any amendments to the agenda?
No, we don't propose any amendments this afternoon.
Okay, thank you. And are there any corrections to the minutes of the regular meeting of November 4, 2024?
Madam Chair, I move adoption of the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Singer and Mr. Wigder. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Those minutes are adopted. We have two presentations today. The first one is an update on East Palmetto Park Road by Alta Design and Planning, and Municipal Services Director Zach Beer will give the presentation accompanied by members of the Alta Planning and Design Team. Good afternoon, Mr. Beer.
Good afternoon, CRA Chair Anklis and board members. Again, Zach Beer, you're Municipal Services Director. I'm joined by Ali Alwan, and we will be providing our most comprehensive update before you today for East Palmetto Park Road concepts and the options that we'll be evaluating.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for having us here today. We're very excited to provide an update on the downtown mobility study, specifically on the latest on the East Palmetto Park Road concepts and another progress update. So we're going to start with a brief summary of the community engagement efforts that we've done in the past for this project. We're going to do a brief recap of all the different data points that we've collected to provide you all with a trade-off analysis, and then the different concepts that were developed for the corridor. So just briefly, as you all know, we spent the months between March and May of this year conducting different community engagement events. We, our goal was to reach the community at large and hear from everyone, both digitally and in person. We also presented to different boards, and we had the opportunity to host, or the city did an act of workshop where we also gathered some input. One of the community engagement effort that we undertook was an online survey, and what that showed us, that there were, you know, a few overarching themes that we heard from the community. Generally, it was, you know, concerns about congestion and parking, but also the need for an enhanced pedestrian realm that went hand in hand with the need for more shade. We were provided with different concepts and visions from the community as well, and so we reviewed those. We also heard from different members of the community about different concepts, like, for example, the High Line design in New York City, different ideas that could potentially be brought to Palmetto Park Road. So I hope that as you see the different concepts that are presented in this presentation, you'll see that we try to capture some of this input and apply a feasibility lens, you know, to try to see what could be implemented. And so based on the varied community input we received, you know, there were, as I mentioned, high-level themes of the different concerns and needs and visions from the community. And so what we did is translate that into overall, you know, themes that we used basically to do the trade-off analysis of the different concepts. And so as you can see here, the city's, you know, Vision Zero effort was used as a measurement tool, but also we looked at traffic and parking impacts, shade and walkability, emergency access, and evacuation route. And one thing to point out is the overall, you know, takeaway from the community input is that we received input, opinions on both sides, basically, just, you know, wanting to, with different needs. And so that was a really interesting and challenging perspective that we started with in terms of the needs of the community. It also speaks to the functionality of Palmetto Park Road, serving different needs and different users. So, you know, as I mentioned, we collected different data points, we looked at a variety of elements. First and foremost is safety. of elements. First and foremost is safety. In the last five years, between 2018 and 2023, almost 1,900 crashes occurred in downtown. And I can tell you just for, from a relative perspective, that's quite a lot of crashes, and six people have died, lost their lives during those crashes, which certainly is not acceptable. And we looked at where those hotspots are happening, especially along Palmetto Park Road. What we found is, there were a few intersections where the crashes were higher than average, and they were more severe, you know? And those were the Dixie Highway and the US-1 intersections with Palmetto. Of course, vulnerable road users, pedestrians and bicyclists do tend to be overrepresented in those crashes. I do want to commend the city on their Vision Zero efforts thus far, starting back in 2022, with the adoption of the Vision Zero Resolution, up to just recently, this year getting awarded a $4 million demonstration project grant through the Safe Streets For All Program. It was the second, one of two largest awards during that funding cycle, which really speaks to the city's commitment to improving safety across the city. We looked at parking as part of our evaluation, to really kind of look in terms of what's out there in supply. We reviewed previous studies that have been done, what is, you know, the utilization along East Palmetto Park Road, you know, to really understand what the picture looks like and what the options are for the current parking spaces along Palmetto. And found that even during peak times, there were available spots along Palmetto Park Road. And you'll see, you know, what that means later on in the presentation when we talk about the concepts. And then lastly, in terms of the data collection effort, I just wanted to end on this slide, which basically shows you where the trips are going and coming from along Palmetto Park Road. Generally speaking, half of the people using Palmetto Park Road are either intending to go in and out of downtown, specifically to destinations within downtown. And then, 43% though, are just passing through Palmetto downtown area. And so, that's kind of another example of the diversity of the corridor and its purpose in really serving, you know, residents from across the city. So now, I'm going to get into some of the concepts that we have developed for Palmetto Park Road. We, we thought about the different potentials, you know, potential options for the corridor. What, you know, of course, this is a visioning exercise at this point. We did apply a feasibility lens to some of them, those, the ones that seem to be potentially implementable on a shorter term. And then, like I mentioned before, we also wanted to take into consideration what we heard from the community. And so, you'll see kind of the variation in those different options. Just to start off, this is what's out there right now. Basically, we were dealing with 70 feet of public right-of-way, pretty much along most of the corridor. You know, in the next few options, we're going to be focusing on the section between east of US-1 to Fifth Avenue, and I'll touch later on the section west of US-1. But basically, as you all know, it's five lanes of roadway with some parking on the sides, and then some sidewalk. As you can see here, the amount of sidewalk and shade varies across the corridor in some spaces. It's definitely more navigable. There's room for potentially additional shade structures, but in other areas, the sidewalk width is pretty much the minimum four feet. So, you know, one of the first options we looked at is what we called an enhanced Palmetto Park option. What this does is, we're not taking away any travel lanes. However, in terms of the on-street parking that's out there, are there any spaces that have the potential to be repurposed for a wider sidewalk and/or landscaping? And so, this is what this option is presenting, with, you know, keeping in mind that we didn't determine exactly how many spaces would be repurposed. It's really more about the concept of proposing that. There are areas that have valet parking that we would need to maintain. We wanted to present a few different angles on what that looks like, and so, this is the aerial view of that enhanced Palmetto Park option. Generally speaking, you know, it's really the idea of integrating more shade trees, and where that's not possible due to the space, then kind of complementing that with hard, you know, shade structures to really provide that element that the community, you know, make clear that is needed for the corridor. We also formalized some of the crosswalks, especially, you know, like across Palmetto near First Ave, where pedestrians often cross to access Sanborn Square. So, really kind of formalizing a lot of these crossings and trying to make it safer for navigating Palmetto Park Road regardless of how you move. And so, you know, as I said, the amount of medians in trees, that could vary as we get deeper into design. So, we also provided a street-level rendering of what that could potentially look like. I had mentioned that there are some sections along Palmetto that allow for a little bit more integration of landscape. And so, what that offers is buffer from the travel lanes, and potentially some seating and public art. The next option we looked at is that, you know, removing only one eastbound lane. And so, basically, out of the five lanes, you would repurpose one of the eastbound lanes to gain more space for green, you know, infrastructure, and also sidewalk space, you know, inching more towards more enhanced pedestrian realm. And in this option as well, we're introducing the flex zone, if you will. And what that really speaks to is that the curbside, you know, really, curbside management. The curbside could be repurposed, whether, depending on the peak times during the day, or it could be based on the day of the week. And so, there are different uses that could be introduced in that space. And one of them could remain as parking. Again, you know, the area level view of what that looks like, and really, the main difference is that you would have more space for that greenery. You would be able to integrate more shade trees. It would provide more of a pedestrian feel and walkability throughout most of the corridor. And again, we provided a street-level rendering for that. And the main difference is that you have definitely more space buffer between the travel lanes and the pedestrian way. So you tend to feel that kind of safer, more enjoyable walking experience, and also an actually wider pathway that could integrate shade structures, larger shade trees, and public art. So this is the option where basically, to gain, to maximize the pedestrian realm and the shade and the infrastructure, basically removing one lane in each direction. And so, you end up with a total of three lanes, which includes the turn lanes, instead of the currently, the current five lanes that are out there. Same concept for parking. That could be repurposed and needs to be really kind of dialed in as we get deeper into design if this option were to be chosen. This is how it would look like at the street level. As you can see, that pedestrian space with shade trees, you know, native trees and seating and public art and feel would be felt on both sides of the street with the extra space. And then, of course, the crossing distance would be a lot smaller. The last cross-section that I wanted to present in this particular section of the presentation involves no moving of the actual curb line, but rather, it's more of reprogramming the travel lanes, the outside travel lanes. So, during certain times of the day, the off-peak, or even certain times, days of the week, you would basically convert the outside lanes into parking. And so, there are different ways to actually implement that, but this is more of basically a policy, you know, change that would put this in effect rather than a reconstruction. So I wanted to go through some of the trade-off analysis of those main sections, and then I will go through the rest of the concepts that we thought through. You know, I had mentioned that the concepts that I presented thus far were east of US-1. The main reason is that unfortunately, the space between Dixie and US-1 is extremely constrained in terms of right-of-way, with the presence of the railroad tracks right there at Dixie. It presents a lot of challenges in terms of what really could be done realistically. You know, it's a very short segment as well. However, you know, as I showed earlier, the safety is, safety is a major issue at those two intersections. And so, there are still things that could be done, like pinching the curbs in, basically creating a tighter curve that will make cars slow down. Our analysis showed that a lot of these crashes are happening because of turning movements. But you see, the pink pathways are showing that trucks are still able to make those turns. And city staff is actually in conversations with the DOT right now on the US-1 project, which is currently going through redesign, to try to come up with the best possible design for the intersection that would make it safer. And so, in terms of traffic impacts, you know, we, we looked at the different, at the four different options, or three rather, for, from a traffic analysis perspective, and applied, you know, standard practice engineering analysis, traffic analysis. And, you know, we, we ran it through the program, and currently, between Second Avenue and almost, you know, just east of Fifth Avenue, you've got almost five minutes of travel time. Naturally, in 20 years, there's going to be growth, right, in population. So even if all the lanes were to stay, we would expect some additional delay. If we were to remove only one of the lanes, which is the east, one of the eastbound lanes, then we would encounter an additional minute of delay. And of course, a full road diet would have a more significant impact. And so, it's important to kind of clarify that these times are averages. They also looked at a certain snapshot of the day, which is the PM peak hour, the afternoon peak hour, which tends to be basically the worst time of the day. However, you know, the range would be basically plus or minus the times that you see up here. In terms of parking, you know, the biggest thing to point out about parking is that there is the current supply that's out there, and there is also the different policies, programming, and, you know, repurposing of what's out there, and really, you know, integrating things like wayfinding and other elements that would make it easier to find parking. There's also a lot of technologies out there, like, you know, parking management strategies that integrate pricing mechanisms that would help manage the parking. One thing to point out about Palmetto Park Road specifically is that, you know, the highest supply of parking is currently in Meisner Park and Royal Palm Place. And so, it's, it's not, you know, adjacent to Palmetto Park Road per se. And so, those are the things that we can start to think about as we get into, you know, more details of design. Oh, and the last item I wanted to, sorry. It's not going back. Oh, here. The last item that I wanted to point out about this slide is that the city, of course, launched the Boca Connect, and it is certainly part of the conversation, you know? It's still too early to tell, but a lot of, there is ridership, for sure, that is being taken around downtown and along Palmetto. And so, how that plays out could help really kind of think about the overall strategy for parking in downtown. We looked at shade high level. You know, I mentioned that the more space you get for the pedestrian realm, then the more opportunity for shade structures and trees. And so, this is kind of just a high-level, you know, perspective of how much more shade than what's out there you, you would get with each of those options. And then, you know, wanted to pause a little bit on this slide. It really kind of lays out the, the trade-offs side by side. You know, I mentioned earlier the different themes that we drew from what we heard from the community, the safety element that ties into the city's Vision Zero efforts, the traffic congestion concerns, the parking impacts of the different design options, the enhanced pedestrian realm that we heard from the community as a need, which is also integrate, you know, associated with the need for additional shade. And then, the public safety implications, whether that means emergency access, fire, police. And then, of course, the fact that Palmetto Park Road is a designated evacuation route currently. And so, you know, one thing to, to point out here is that not one option is perfect for all these different trade-offs. At the end of the day, it is certainly a trade-off analysis, and, you know, how we move forward will have impacts regardless. And then, you know, you'll see that the further enhance the pedestrian realm on both sides have similar trade-offs. But of course, you know, the more you reclaim for pedestrians, the more benefits for pedestrians in shade, however, the more impact on traffic. So just to kind of going towards the end of the presentation, wanted to talk about a couple of other options that we actually looked through. One of them is what we called the Sun Line, and inspired by the Highline in New York City, which we heard a lot of the community members mention. We assumed that basically, the ad-grade section for Palmetto would stay the same between US-1 and Fifth, and then the pedestrian and bicycle access would be provided through an elevated structure. And so, you know, we tried to basically portray that in this concept. Where exactly it goes, you know, can be further designed along the way. But the idea is that you want to minimize the impacts on the ground. And perhaps, I don't know if you're familiar with the underlying, but you know, that space underneath it could serve additional purposes. One thing to point out with this option is that, you know, there, there are environmental implications, noise impacts, you're now at a second-story level, there are cost implications as well. But we wanted to portray it, and you know, of course, there's precedents. There are several cities besides New York City that have adopted that approach, especially when you have constrained public right-of-way. A couple, the couple of final options we looked at are elevating Palmetto Park Road itself, basically for cars, where to actually do that and meet the minimum clearance requirements and, you know, having, you know, keeping in mind that this is a really high feasibility, you know, not super detailed structural analysis, we would have to go all the way west of Second Avenue to achieve that elevation of the travel lanes and go all the way to Fifth Avenue. We did want to, you know, acknowledge this option just from the sense of, it's obviously probably the most costly option, but, you know, it's, what it offers is that you're removing most of the cars of Palmetto Park Road on the ground, and then you're repurposing all of that extra space into bikes and pedestrian space. And finally, you know, when we look at the impacts on Palmetto Park Road, the, it's part of a larger network, right? And so, there are a lot of other roadways that get heavily impacted by whatever happens on Palmetto. And so, we, we also looked at elevating Dixie itself. Of course, it's very close to the tracks, that has a lot of actual feasibility implications, and then heavy coordination with DOT and the county, and cost. It would be cost prohibitive. But it is, you know, one of the thoughts that was put forward to alleviate the really congested area in that, in that spot. And so, in terms of next steps, what we are hoping to hear from you all, you know, in terms of what concepts can move forward towards additional feasibility and eventually design, I want to emphasize that at this time, neither Alta or staff have a preferred concept per se. We wanted to hear your thoughts about those different options. We did kind of an initial feasibility. Moving forward with the specific options you recommend would give us the opportunity to kind of keep looking more in depth. I touched a little bit on policy and programming, but a lot of these options would be coupled with policy changes that are needed, programmatic changes, whether on the curbside management or parking elements. And this is the slide where I wanted to end, is, you know, really reiterating that Palmetto Park Road is part of a larger ecosystem of the roadway, roadway network in downtown. You know, there are parallel streets to Palmetto You know, there are parallel streets to Palmetto Park Road that can serve as lower stress, if you will, streets to bicyclists, for example, like Second Avenue, which I know the city is already working on. North-South, the city is already working with US-1, but Meisner Boulevard is a really high, you know, candidate for connecting the dots across downtown, making it safer to really navigate downtown by, on foot or by bike. And so, you know, just wanted to end there with the idea that whatever we do on Palmetto Park Road, a downtown perspective is needed, a master plan, if you will, overview is needed to really continue to evaluate it. With that, I would like to thank you for your time and open up for questions.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Mr. Beer, were you also doing any kind of a presentation or?
No, I wanted to let Alta run through all the detailed analysis they've done. I can just certainly add that staff has been engaged with an exceptional level of effort, even myself personally doing geometric designs for roundabouts, exploring that. And I do, you know, some of those examples seem a little bit far-fetched, and at the same time, staff wanted to, obviously Palmetto is a chronicled roadway corridor within the city, so give it a fresh look in earnest and really take every opportunity to look at all the possibilities and present that before council, and then also try and identify those trade-offs. And I think one of the things that isn't up on the screen is really the detailed level of the cost-time-quality project management hat, which you have the qualitative characteristics of the corridor to have a dialogue about, and then further analysis would be needed on the quantitative level to look at increasing costs, underground utilities, those existing engineering corridor opportunities. But that was the intent, to have Alta really look at the entirety of it and open up a dialogue with the board to have a discussion of which, if any, of those cross-sections would be an opportunity or a candidate to further evaluate.
Okay, thank you. Saul, open up for questions. Ms. Drucker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation and thank you, Mr. Beer, because I know that when we started this process, I guess maybe a year ago or maybe six months it all comes together, we had asked for bold. We had asked for, what are you going to put out? We want to see it all, even if it's bold, and that was produced in the presentation. And I know that you're not going to make some recommendations, but I've had conversations with Mr. Brown and I've had conversations with Mr. Beer leading up to this meeting. And what I kind of want to, it's not a specific question for you, for a second, I want to turn it over to this council and really to the community. If you want to have Vision Zero and truly, truly save lives, like public safety, we're going to have to make hard choices. I have said that before up here. We could do every study in the world, but if we're not willing to make the changes, we will never attain Vision Zero. So when I see some of these options, some of them I like better than others, and then others, I'm kind of like, they're kind of far-fetched, maybe that's not the way we should go. But we, this council, this body that does policy, needs to be behind it and make those difficult choices. If not, all we're doing is spinning our wheels. So with that said, I looked at some of these processes or whatever. No change, also want to, I'll take a step back. We are going through a big change with the government center. We need to be aware of what that plan is going to look like, because it's going to affect that corridor, it's going to affect that whole interchangeable area. So maybe we do need more, we are working on mobility plan, maybe we need a mobility plan, because it's going to affect everything. And for me, and I know some people are going to not like what I have to say next, but maybe it's not making a change right now, just until we figure out what this whole area is supposed to look like. The, can you put back the slides with the different ones, with all the arrows up and down? I think it'll be easier to talk to, because the names are a little, some of them don't align, I could see. So that's the no-build. The enhanced is basically just, and please don't take offense to what I'm going to say next, but it's just adding a bunch of canopy to the area. It's not really putting in Vision Zero, mobility, connectivity to save lives, so I'm definitely not interested in that option. Further enhanced, in terms of the four that you've kind of focused on, to me would be more of the recommended. And I understand that we have evacuation routes, and I understand that we have concerns with fire and ISO. But if we're committing to Vision Zero, we as a body and staff, city manager, we need to look at ISO, we need to look at the OEs that we've talked about recently, because we're going to add more OEs in the downtown potentially. So we're almost kind of in that kind of, you know, impasse in terms of what do we do? We can't sit here and say that if we start to save lives with Vision Zero, that we're going to impact police and evacuate, I mean, fire and police. So I had asked from Mr. Beer a bunch of information on response time, a lot of data that I don't have yet, unless it came in this morning, for us to kind of look at and really be able to sit up here and have a productive conversation on which way we should move for visibility. I also had a conversation with him about all the other business partners that we have, like, has a transit planning agency even seen this? They have not, I can answer that. Have we talked to FDOT about this? So there is a lot of more work that, in my opinion, needs to be done before we, before I can sit here and say, this is what we should be doing, because this is, like you said, very preliminary. So again, this has been one of my efforts. For four and a half years, I've been pushing Vision Zero, but we need to commit to truly Vision Zero. And I know we have the policy, and I'm so grateful we have the two awards, and by the way, and the NLC, Boca Raton was the talk of the town when it came to the grants and all the things that I was invited to because of our infrastructure, so kudos to staff. We're just the policymakers. But we definitely have to have more, a better conversation, even if it's a separate workshop, I don't know, where I can hear from fire and I can talk to some of these other entities, and then us, how are we going to fix this? If not, we're never going to make the change. We're just not going to get there. We're going to, we're going to continue to lose lives. That's just my preliminary.
Thank you, Ms. Drucker. Mr. Wager.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Drucker, for those heartfelt words. Actually, what I felt was the most important part of the presentation was the very last, very, very last sentence that you said, which I took to heart, which said, "A downtown master plan is needed," which echoes, obviously, what Deputy Mayor Drucker said and our discussions on mobility and the ideas potentially of embracing having a mobility plan, which could embrace us having a mobility fee, which is just, again, the Florida Legislature just passed a clarification for us to be able to fund those things with a separate alternative mobility fee. So certainly, I'm in favor of this downtown master plan happening, and of course, it working together with what we're doing in the government campus. Before I get to some just specific things that I thought about, again, one of the things that I see here, if you just, I don't know if you have just a layout of the map of the whole, of that whole section over there, but again, you know, of course, the connection to federal and Dixie is critical, because as we know, and we did the mobility walk the other, the other day, I mean, the cars are racing down Federal Highway. I mean, it's unbelievable, as we're standing there, they're just flying, it's almost like when they see the light is green, they think they're at the racetrack, you know? I mean, that's how it feels. But the point is, there's no mid-block crossings, there's no crosswalks until you get to Northeast Eighth Street. So again, and Meisner Park is supposed to be our grandest destination, so why would you want to just fly by it? You know, we should change the name of Federal Highway. It's not, it shouldn't be a highway anymore, not downtown. Not to be coy, but the point is, the cars are driving way too fast, just flying through the downtown. The downtown is a residential neighborhood right now. When you look at these issues, I definitely don't think we should be staying the same. But again, the other thing is if you drive downtown, or walk downtown, or bike downtown, as we do, for some reason, many, many people who are driving, and I understand, lots of people are in a rush, but it's they're racing to get to this bridge. And when they get off this bridge, it's as if they're racing to drive into the Atlantic Ocean, okay? There's no, there's nothing stopping or slowing them down, right? There's nothing. It's just, it's a highway. It's a four-and-a-half-lane highway to drive into the Atlantic Ocean. So doing something that's disconjoined, again, without acknowledging, let's say you did remove all those lanes and made it, okay, then right when they get to the bridge, it's going to be, because that's county, right? Right when they get to the bridge, it's going to be four lanes? So again, as we've learned from our mobility director and Jeff Speck and everyone else, if you give people more lanes and wider lanes, they're going to speed up, they're going to drive, drive fast. So if you're giving them two extra lanes when they get to the bridge, you're asking them to speed when they get to that bridge. Likewise, when they get off the bridge, you're asking the populace to speed, you know? So again, we have to look at the other side of the bridge, too. I like the intersections, that's huge. Again, if you think about what Meisner Park is, again, Meisner Park eventually will need some reimagining as well, but Meisner Park has two lanes of traffic in one direction and two lanes of traffic in another direction and parking on each, so two lanes of traffic. In theory, those cars could go faster, but they don't. And the reason why they don't is because it's cobblestones, right? It's bricks, there's lots of places to cross, there's, the lanes are now, everything is traffic calming. So I think that has to be in the mindset of whatever we're trying to do here. Can you go to page 12?
Sure.
Of your presentation, please.
Other way. Do you know if I can go other way? Sorry, not the most tech-savvy, 12.
Page 12. Yes, you talked about traffic data. That's page five.
Slowing down.
There you go. Thank you. So again, what we're learning here, I'd love to see the data 20 years ago and the data today compared to today, but one of the things that we're talking about, and now, over the last 20x years, there's 3,000 units or so downtown. Downtown has become a pedestrian neighborhood, so it makes sense that 50% of the trips are staying within the downtown. There are people driving from downtown to downtown, right? So again, as we push the connect program, as we push the shuttle program, if we can give the people who already live downtown opportunities to not use their cars, apparently the data shows here that 50% of the people will take us up on it. And so again, which will reduce traffic, which will reduce accidents, and, but likewise, when we think about policy decisions, it also means we do not need a suburban parking structure, a parking regime, as we do not need one per 300 downtown anymore, because if half the trips are originating and staying in downtown, in theory, we need half the trips of a suburban parking policy regime. So when we look at this holistic, you know, program of what we're looking to do, I certainly hope we think about reducing parking requirements in the downtown, because again, the people who live down there, they, you know, they want to, you know, they want to stay down there. People are embracing this 15-minute cities thing, so it's, you know, I think it's critical.
All right. So Commissioner, just a quick point of clarification on that. The trips within downtown is 5%. The trips coming from outside the downtown into the downtown is 52%. So we still have a lot of vehicle traffic driving into and looking for a destination downtown to utilize it, and then 43 moving through. So we're working on that number, but I do think the place to find, while I think there, obviously, it's a future thinking of what that will look like, but for now, you know, 95% of people are still utilizing a car to get into the downtown, and, you know, the success of Meisner, having them park in the garage and have that pedestrian experience is part of that. And you've got that, to me, going through this whole process, again, the striking part was the, call it the parking desert along Palmetto. Not that we want to invite people to park on Palmetto itself, but if you're going out to Luff's or one of the other restaurants or something there, you know, it's either street parking or parking all the way back at the kind of western portion and walking down Palmetto, possible, but I think less likely than that kind of shorter duration or some of those things. So I think for staff, it was big to see that, really evaluating what that parking looks like and thinking about that from the perspective of tying it into the, call it zones or hubs of where activities are happening is an important component.
No, it's a good point, but again, you know, if we could show that the people living downtown will stay out of their cars, if we give those, if we give them alternative opportunities to not get in their cars, right? It's showing that we can do this. It's not just everyone driving in. A lot of the people are already there, they're just driving around, right? So again, as people embrace the connect, as people embrace alternative things, as we do more, we can give them opportunities not to increase, not to use their cars, and that's important, too. But yes, certainly, obviously, changing where the parking is and just keeping it off of Palmetto is something I see important. Yeah, I mean, obviously, the discussions on elevating Palmetto and all the, you know, the High Line stuff that's happening in big, giant cities, you know, are things that might not be on our radar now, but in the future, as we do a downtown master plan and a, you know, a government campus master plan, you know, you never know if a certain portion of that plan is elevated, you know, it might lead into a very thoughtful pedestrian or bridge, and maybe that bridge is not on all of Palmetto, maybe that bridge is just over Federal Highway and Dixie Highway, which are the critical, critical traffic components. So, you know, certainly, I'm in favor, if you go to the map with the arrows up and down, or the page, please. Certainly, I'm in favor of doing something that's more than no-build. It cannot continue the same way. It's got to be thoughtful, well-planned out. Enhanced might be the first step, and then we can go further enhanced as we want to, but, you know, understanding, traffic calming is not necessarily traffic elimination, so the barrier-allowing people would still have a way to get off, the emergency services would still have a way to get through without interruption, and, you know, and certainly evacuation routes would not be compromised. But reprogramming, especially intersections, and certainly enhanced build is a way, I would say, is a way to start, and considering roundabouts in certain places. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wager. Mr. Singer, Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, please, thank you, Madam Chair. First, I agree with my colleagues, there's a lot of information to process today, and we need a lot more, and I'm going to ask staff for some questions on safety and impact. I mean, a very staggering stat that came out of this is that we might be looking at a nine-minute increase in just a five-block stretch in a short order, which is not sustainable. So in 20 years, no doubt, but in 20 years, but that's still, that gets you on a path. So luckily, this isn't binary, there's lots of different levers, and I want to try to get to a couple, but I agree with Ms. Drucker that we need more information today, and I know there's a group here who's eager to present some stuff. Apparently, they got a lot more information earlier than some of us got it, so be it. And it's, I don't want to see this like as a rebuttal, it's just food for thought, which I think we need to consider. Mr. Beer, could you go back to the slide that talked about the two, the two crashes, and you were, it seemed that there was a suggestion of some, a quicker fix now, because I've always liked trying to get efficiencies and ROI. There was the slide where you're coming with two bicycle accidents around the curves at Dixie and Federal, I believe.
Dixie and Federal, is that, was that this line?
Ye, no, there was a later one where you had a zoom in.
Oh, the pink, sorry.
The auto turn.
Pink, sorry, went, blew right past it.
Yeah, the pink.
So what can we do now in terms of tightening curves? Is this something we can do that doesn't dramatically impact, doesn't cost, you know, inordinate sums, doesn't dramatically impact the flow, doesn't impact the time going through, and also emergency access? Because, explain it to me simply and to the public simply, are there things we can do the way we did down at Meisner Boulevard and Federal Highway to kind of create a safer curve? Can we do that here?
Certainly, this is an area where I would highly recommend regardless, based on the crash history that was identified, to do these improvements. And staff spent probably a day and a half, and then we had a three-hour session with myself and all the traffic staff and the DOT to just talk about Palmetto and Federal, and really try and come up with all possible options, because it is a very constrained right-of-way section. And at the same time, we recognize, I personally saw the fatal crash that happened there of a person on an electric bike that came up in the right lane, in the cycle lane, and then somebody making the right turn. lane, and then somebody making the right turn in a vehicle. Um, and those, those things, adding safety into that corridor and looking at that for a, a major enhancement is something where adding safety for bicycle lanes and all pedestrian users is important. So yes, in that corridor, it's, in that section, it's doable, and specifically, the reason I brought it up is from Federal, that's going to be part of the FDOT lane repurposing that's happening on that corridor. So staff is working with them right now to put in design elements, and then also to, Commissioner Wiger's note, uh, we've got them generally to agree to a pedestrian signal across from the Meisner garages, so they're adding that in with a pedestrian crosswalk. So each one of those things, staff is evaluating it in detail and adding kind of incremental improvements. And so I think if, if the ask is, are there incremental improvements that can happen on Palmetto? Yes, they, they are, and that if, any direction on that, staff, staff would be interested in, in getting that feedback today.
Well, thank you. When you say incremental, like I'm actually seeing it as greater. You've identified pinpoints of the most at-risk. Can we focus on these at-risk regions and do it more effectively in terms of time and cost, particularly in the fact that we're already going to be doing roadwork, or FDOT's going to be doing roadwork in '26 as part of our Complete Streets Plan on Federal? Seems like this would tie in, and we get a large, um, high ROI, I don't want to use the expression bang for the buck, but because different context from Eisenhower saying it, um, and we don't want any of that sort of stuff, but can we get higher ROI here on this and try to delve into these more concerning areas now?
I, I, I mean, I think certainly from a focus area, it's a part of the overall Palmetto corridor. So what, I would say yes, um, with Alta coming onboard, part of their RFP was for the overall, you know, downtown enhancement, and we have, we're expecting to issue additional task orders to them. And I, I would say it doesn't necessarily have to be a linear process. Uh, it can be in parallel, looking at individual intersection improvements, or like I said, I think the, the federal portion is best served tying into the DOT, uh, process. So I think that's, that's something where that'll, that'll take place as part of that project, but certainly the Dixie and Palmetto is, is something we can evaluate.
Very well. And then could you just walk through briefly some of the concerns? You, you'd sent an email, I think, on Friday. Could you walk through some of those concerns that you had identified? Uh, they were touched on in Alta, but I'd like to hear them from staff and staff's perspective on some of the challenges we're dealing with.
Yeah, so for that, we, uh, sent a note on Friday, and, and just addressing some of the other information that went out, we were asked for public records and complied with public records requests. So I, I do apologize if anything happens to get, is sent out in advance of council seeing it, and at the same time, we try and, and balance that with public records request to comply, and then also ask those that get the information that they, uh, treat it carefully so we can have an appropriate dialogue in the public arena. But we, the, the update for Friday's information was kind of elaborating on the details of, um, I, I will not mince words on this one moment of Palmetto. It is the most complicated corridor in the city, from the city's perspective, with a massive number of users, and any changes to Palmetto Park Road will be very difficult and be painful. That is the reality of Palmetto Park Road. They are doable, I think there is enhancements that can be made. I also will openly admit that changes could enhance the pedestrian realm. It's just the thinking from a collective, uh, combination of utilities that are underground, the existing sidewalks, the business owners, the parking spaces, the existing crossings and infrastructure. Uh, I went in and, and made sure, I, I studied history on it, I think it, it doesn't predict the future, but it informs. Palmetto has been developing this way for 70 years. I think to kind of change it rapidly is an option, but would be very dramatic to, to do that, versus kind of setting a master plan of a, of a, of a, kind of bending the curve of a direction where Palmetto goes. So the reason I give that backstory is you have fire. Uh, Fire Stations 1, 2, and 3, so the original fire stations of the city. Fire Station 1 is at Glades and Federal. That's the apparatus that responds to high structure fires and, uh, intense fires that happen in the downtown. There was one recently very close to Palmetto and, um, A1A, uh, that was a very large structure fire that, uh, fire, the fire department had to respond to. So then backup is Fire Station 3, that's on the beach. Their apparatus is mainly focused on ocean rescue and other activities. And then, uh, Fire Station 3 is down Palmetto. But all of those have very heavy activities that happen in the downtown, and if we made decisions to change Palmetto, we would have to have very detailed operational discussions with our public safety, uh, uh, operational folks to figure out what that would look like, make sure we had advanced plans. Same with the police department. They have different zones, uh, where they're going to respond to and from, and making sure we have the appropriately zoned areas based on any changes that we have. Then this roadway is characterized as an evacuation route, so staff noted that in the, in the event that there were changes to the evacuation route, we would have to meet with the Department of Emergency Management and make a determination on how that might impact the overall evacuation, or if there was changes to the plans. Uh, and then recently, in 2021, there was an update to the state statutes. So above all things, um, it, it dictates in the state statutes that if there are, uh, changes to roadway corridors, that the staff has to do a full traffic analysis, analysis, and notify every business owner of such change that's going to happen to the lane configuration. So I think, I, I guess the point being is, um, I, I think those, those elements, they're not concerns, but those are all the things in the timeline of activities that would take place to reimagine what the Palmetto corridor would look like from an operations perspective. So staff was just, staff was noting those as we have the full discussion about it, to be able to get into the dialogue of the complexity of the corridor.
And, and Ms. Drucker made the point about potentially adding OEs. We also have a, a countervailing issue if roadways are changed and the traffic is baked into the overall DRI, that may, uh, create challenges with the reduction in OEs and stakeholders not being happy about that, um, to the point of being gravely unhappy about that and, and taking appropriate action. So that's another factor that has to be weighed into. So there's a very complicated tableau, and I appreciate your wading through all of it. For those reasons, I think Ms. Drucker's point was silly in that, I don't know if we're going to land exactly tonight yet, but, um, you know, this is a dialogue that will continue. And speaking of the dialogue, I'm going to have to beg your pardon in advance, Madam Chair and everyone else, there may come a point in this afternoon where I have to step out early, and then not, I'm telling anyone now, I'm not doing it in response to any individual speaker. I just hope you're mindful of the clock and another commitment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singer. Mr. Thompson?
I, I think this has been a valuable conversation. I appreciate Alta's work. Zach, your explanation just a moment ago was very helpful. But I do think there's, I don't think it's a rebuttal, but I think there has been some ideas put on paper by some very talented and very engaged residents who I think we ought to hear from. I view them more as complimentary ideas as opposed to a rebuttal. So I'm interested to hear what they said. I'll, I'll save the balance of my comments and questions until after that.
Madam Chair, can I have a follow-up?
Yes, Ms. Drucker.
So when I spoke to Mr. Beer in terms of all the things with the safety, obviously public safety, anybody that's an elected official, that's our number one thing that we want, and I've been up here, again, preaching about Vision Zero to save lives. These are all things that, whatever way we decide to move forward, we can evaluate. We can look, again, not interested in the enhanced, in my opinion, respectfully, that's just adding canopy, and as you can see, the most important thing that we're doing, trying to do is Vision Zero, and the hour is down. So to me, like, what, if I were to pick an option today, it'd be the further enhanced, but we would have to do all the research that, that we have, right? And kind of get all this data that I don't have, because we didn't get this through that public request that some of the members on the audience got on 1031. And Mr. Thompson, I disagree with you. I think we should table that discussion, and we should be allowed to marinate and process everything we presented here, because staff has worked with taxpayer dollars with Alta to bring this plan to us. So I'm not interested in a rebuttal plan today. I might be interested in that in two weeks from now. But today, I'm very proud that staff has put this together, worked really hard to get this to us, and I think it's a little insulting that they would come and then propose all new plans, when we haven't even had the opportunity. That information was, this presentation or part of it was shared with that group October 31st. We got that presentation last week on Tuesday. So I would, I would not want to hear from them today. I would like to table that discussion, but we can have that in the next part. So in terms of policy change, you're going to have to identify, like, we, we talked a little bit about some of the policy change. One of the things that Mr. Wiger said, which I agree 100%, which is another thing that would be painful and will also impact fire and police, is when you start putting in traffic calming. So it leads me back to the beginning of my conversation. We need to make a decision, which we have, because it's mobility and transportation connectivity is one of our strategic plans, or we are going to get behind Vision Zero fully, because we're going to have to work with fire and police, find different routes, understand evacuation zones. If you look at any, if you look at any city that's going through this and has gone through this, and I'm just coming off the heels of Tampa, I just did a three-hour tour of Vision Zero, that, you have to make those changes, and they work with all the departments. So yeah, that's why I say we need more data, we need, I understand the impacts, we want to get people off the island. By the way, I've said it before, my children, or one now, sometimes lives on that side of the island. So again, I think that, um, and I was being facetious of the no build or saying, we do nothing now, but just wait. That was just me saying, we need to, what we need to do is really focus on how we're going to push the Vision Zero, plus all the other projects that we're working on, because you have a full slate of other projects that we've been pushing, whether it's the FDOT, whether it's stuff with the TIP, with the TPA, with the long-range plan. So, um, to me, proposing anything here, and I guess that you wanted to know, like a takeaway, like if you go back to do feasibility, well, for me, no build would be a no-go, and enhance, absolutely not, the arrow's down. I wouldn't do, for me, I wouldn't do any feasibility studies on anything that doesn't impact Vision Zero, that would be supportive of our Vision Zero efforts. And that's why I, I'm going to ask this council and the members of this council, who have supported a lot of the initiatives, when we decided to approve Vision Zero and Complete Streets policy, that we think bold and innovative, but in a holistic approach, that we're continuing to have public safety. So we need to make those decisions that some are going to be painful for our community. So that's kind of my take on that.
Thank you, Ms. Drucker. So I have some thoughts too, but I want to start by saying that I had spoken to the members of, some of the members of the 344 group, and I invited them here today, because I think it was important while we were having this discussion, that we have a full discussion, and I don't think it's going to be the last full discussion. I think we're going to have, um, several more discussions, because I also agree that we don't have all the data that, that we need right now. And I agree with your idea that with a workshop in, in the future, with FDOT, with fire, with police, with the county, with the Department of Emergency Management, with business owners, with residents, with a, a full traffic analysis, if we need to do that. I don't know whether we have an updated downtown parking analysis, um, yet, so I'd like to see that too. But as far as the four different, um, possibilities that were given us today, I also, you know, I'm looking at the arrows up and down, it's page 35, if you want to put that back up. What I didn't see in any of the options was, um, the opportunity to do, because there's medians in every option that we've been given. So there is no opportunity on this presentation of a travel lane in the middle, in the middle. So one lane on each side with a, with a travel or emergency lane, and not the medians. So I'd like to see that. I don't see any bike lanes mentioned anywhere. I see, um, in the extra, um, extra space, I see landscaping trees, benches, and sidewalk, but I don't see any bike lanes. I, I know we have, uh, bike lane, um, bypass, maybe on Second, but I can tell you, I've ridden my bike down that street, I know Mr. Wiger's ridden his bike down that street. There's usually garbage cans in that bike lane and cars parked in that bike lane. If we're going to have, um, if we're going to have this downtown and transform our downtown, I don't want it to be mediocre. I want it to be, I want it to be top of the line, and I think we need to take the time to do it right. You know, the world is a different place than it was five minutes ago. When we engaged with Alta, we didn't have two unsolicited proposals for our, for our government campus. We didn't have in the, in the budget, Mr. Brown, this year, we approved the budget to hire a Jeff Speck or Jeff Speck-type person, right? So we're going to have that input as well. I think there needs to be more collaboration, which again, is the reason why I like to hear from this group and for you to hear from them also. I think, um, I think it could be helpful. So those are some of the things I'd like to see, you know, even the, the possibility of if we keep parking on the street, the angle parking. I like the tightening of curves, as the mayor mentioned. I'd like to see and know what our opportunities are to do quick builds, uh, to try some of these things out. And I, I know you've done them in the past, because you've shown us photos of, of what you've done in the past, and during season would be a great time to do that, but, um, it may not be this year. So, um, Mr. Beer, you made a mention about roundabouts, and there was a, a section of the road, I think, that is a possibility from Meisner to Fifth, to decrease the lanes and have a roundabout that might be just a two, the, the two-lane roundabout instead of a four-lane roundabout. Can you talk on that? And can you also just tell me, only because this came up with a conversation that I was having, what synchroanalysis is?
Yeah.
And has staff performed a synchroanalysis and what the findings of that would be?
Yeah, absolutely. Great question. So first answering the roundabouts is we have had, um, input from, for, obviously, we've seen the, uh, as we put in the slides, the images about the gondolas and some of those enhanced features. And I think understanding that is, is both from a context classification and an aesthetics point of view. So obviously, roundabouts are continuous movement intersections. I mean, there's different places I've been, all over, uh, certain parts of the country are known for them, you know, they've adopted, I think it's Carmel, uh, Indiana, I want to say, I'll probably get this date wrong, but I think they have the most number of roundabouts in the United States. Uh, but it's, it's kind of, the, those roundabouts and that traffic configuration have developed that way, whereas taking an urban environment and putting a continuous movement traffic object into that, I think it would be very challenging, because I'll take, for example, 18th Street Roundabout and Camino that people are familiar with in Boca Raton. Large enough radius, enough space where you have people with low enough volumes that people are able to enter it. We've had some feedback about, uh, Royal Palm Yacht and Country Club, but have, have managed that and mitigated it, and those are functioning. In the downtown, we, uh, looking at that, the goal is to get pedestrians to be able to cross, have that pedestrian environment. If you have a continuous movement, uh, intersection at both of those, uh, I, I think that's kind of counter to what we'd be trying to achieve. And then even, I, I took my own time, because I, I really wanted to look at it in earnest, and did a design of both a two-lane roundabout, so that's a four-lane section. That doesn't fit, that's over the size. I think I submitted in the packet showing the Camino Real Roundabout in that one. Uh, you're moving into a, um, an impact where you'd have to take out buildings and do things that is, is not feasible. So then in a single-lane roundabout in both of those conditions, we found that through a, then this is where it blends into the synchroanalysis. So synchroanalysis is a, uh, a simulation model of traffic flowing. So it's not only the geometry, uh, but it provides traffic engineers the opportunity to plug in the operation side, because I think that's a critical component of discussion today. There are times on Palmetto from a planning level where the ADT works, the average traffic works, uh, but that discounts the operation side, which is the operation of the tracks at the railroad crossing, the bridge operations, and the combined, uh, double peaks that happen in the mid-afternoon and late evening where you can get, I mean, I've driven it myself. You, you get out there and sometimes you hit congestion on Palmetto, and sometimes you don't. So synchro allows staff to put those conditions in and then run, um, theoretical traffic through those intersections and sees what the outcome is. And so we've done, staff has that model for the downtown, and staff did that specifically with Alta, after we were looking at some of these more enhanced cases to evaluate the traffic impacts. And the facts, I'm a licensed professional engineer, so I, I'm not going to make up facts for that. It shows significant traffic impacts. There's backups on Dixie, there's backups in other parts of the corridor, there's off-system movement, because when you take lanes away, people are going to move out onto the parallel roads. That is something that is going to happen based on the change of the corridor. I have no opinion whether that's good or bad, just that is what the synchro models show from a change in the corridor. And then from the roundabouts perspective, I think staff's take, I apologize for the long-windedness there, but the goal of the roundabout is again, continuous flow, and I think aesthetics, so it could be applied here, but I think you'd have to signal it anyway, because you have enough traffic movement where you'd have continuous flow, and it would essentially work like a four-way stop, because I think you would over, with a small radius roundabout, you would end up overwhelming the traffic configurations, and people would just be kind of waiting to get in, and so I don't, I don't know that this is the best application of a roundabout, other than to make it kind of artistically, aesthetically pleasing in the centerscape and make it kind of a fancy, in, signalized intersection, which is, is an option as well.
So you don't think any roundabouts on Palmetto Park Road would be the way to go?
I, I, only from a feasibility standpoint, within that, that limited right-of-way. I, I mean, just generally speaking, back of the envelope requirement for radius is about 150 feet for generally roundabout. So when you're down thinking about a 70-foot right-of-way corridor, I mean, they, you're, it is, it would be a very, very limited roundabout, and I think if we're looking for that visionary look of kind of, again, reimagining the trajectory of Palmetto, I, I would be a little bit disappointed if we ended up with something that was like a five-by-five in the middle that people just kind of drove over. I've seen that in certain instances, where they kind of go for it to do it, and it's not really working like a roundabout.
Okay, thank you. And what about the, the three-lane option, or the, one lane in each direction, and the center lane is a emergency lane or turning lane, or, so addressing some of the issues we might have with emergency vehicles?
Yeah.
And evacuation and...
Sorry, certainly. I, I think that was the, and that really is the intent of the dialogue. I've really appreciated it, because from, hearing from council, the information on where we're headed in that is really something where, when we take, when we would take that back, we'd have to go back to public safety if that was something for us to evaluate, and really do that detailed traffic analysis. Look at the implications of where that begins and ends, what that does to traffic, and then look how we would evaluate that comprehensively. So I, I think it's, again, it's another one of those corridors where there will be, there will be traffic implications from that and operational challenges, but in, in all of those op, in all of the options presented today, I, they are, they can be implemented. And I think I would be foolish not to say that, when you look at Delray and some of the other places, I, I, that's, I went and picked up my kid from Delray last weekend, drove down Atlantic, and then drove back on Palmetto. They're, they're not so dissimilar to say that it's not possible, it's simply saying there would be, noting there would be substantial changes to that corridor and those impacts and challenges that we presented.
Madam Chair? Yes, thanks, Ms. Strucker. Thank you, Mr. Beer.
So going back to the roundabouts, and I'll show you when I do the presentation next, in Tampa, they had put in a roundabout, they were going to put a roundabout, because you come off this bridge through the River Walk, and now they're doing like the East and the West. And then they decided to do like a quick-build project and just put a hard all-stop, like a stop sign that says, "All traffic stop," and like, they didn't do the roundabout, because they felt that it calmed the area, less traffic, people were able to cross, there's like a cross right there, I think I have a picture of it. So again, it doesn't always work, and I agree with you, and specifically for them, they didn't, they didn't incorporate that, because that's a whole walkability area of the, of the river, the walk that they call the East River Walk, and now they're going to do the west side. So they don't always, we like them for certain things, but in certain areas where you want more walkability and connectivity, they had, they just shared that example with me, and I actually walked the whole, obviously, tour. Madam Chair, I just wanted to go back earlier on the 344 folks that are here. I met with them as well, and in no due respect, I don't want to be disrespectful to you, they have met with Alta plenty of times and provided their input. What I was specifically saying is, we have just spent money with Alta, we're going to give them further tasks, and Mr. Beer and his team have put a lot of time and effort into these presentations. So to have someone just come up today, I haven't even looked at their presentation, because I have been representing the city and LLC, it kind of is disheartening to me for the staff. I don't mind getting a presentation, I think just today is in poor taste. That's just my opinion, and I'm going to stick with that.
Thank you. Mr. Wigder.
Okay. I'm trying to, there's a couple of things I hear. Number one, of course, we need to study, this is a serious issue, and you're looking at generational change, just like the government campus, so obviously, something like that cannot be rushed. I appreciate all the work, reading through the reports, reading through the simulation, reading through the data. I was very, very pleased, Mr. Beer, at the, the level of data, the significant data of the simulation, and, and showing that a roundabouts, I saw that, showing that the roundabout really would not be effective there. And, and I also appreciate very much the opportunity that really, like you said, nothing was, no option was left untouched, right? Three-lane, four-lane, five-lane, do nothing, right? So the idea of exploring all options, I thought that was very, very helpful. But what I'm, what I'm hearing here is, in terms of long-range, long-term thinking, we, we do need to have a kind of comprehensive downtown master plan, or mobility master plan, walking pedestrian master plan. I think that's going to be part of our future, and that connects all these big projects that we're doing, that connects them cohesively. I think there's an opportunity for quick builds, which would be something in the midterm, or quote, "in the short term," as the mayor said, quick builds. But as we've been talking about in the past, I also think that there's, we've talked about many times, I think there's an opportunity for kind of tactical urbanism projects, pilot programs, where we try something, where we try something literally with, it, it could be just paint and pavers and planters, you know, where we can try some of these things on a temporary basis, as part of a, you know, the next level of concept study, where it's not even a quick build, you know, I mean, and the quick build on those tight curbs, even those could be done on a tactical urbanism, saying, hey, let's, let's, you know, let's harden up the, harden up the curbs, even those could be tried before we spend a lot of taxpayer dollars on that. So I, I do see opportunities for short-term, let's call it midterm and longer-term things in order to get to this Vision Zero where we want to be. And, and listen, you know, Deputy Mayor, I applaud you want to save people, I do, I appreciate, I see the passion that you know it's important, but as we've learned in the government, and I'm continuing to learn, you know, doing the right studies, doing those things, doing the engineering analysis, it takes time, and, and, and I appreciate the staff that, that does that. Likewise, I have not separately met with any other groups or anybody else on this project, so I am okay with, you know, with people coming to present their ideas, but, but I, you know, I, I, again, I guess it shouldn't be a practice that there's ad hoc groups coming to present certain things, but certainly, everyone in the public is entitled to present their ideas to all of us anytime, and we encourage it. But I can understand there has to be some level of procedure involved too, but I'm, I'm okay listening to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wigder.
Madam Chair, sorry, just...
Yes, Mr. Singer.
Couple of comments, and I know the time is going to run late on me, and I, again, I beg everyone's pardon, so I'll be brief. Again, these four slides, there are many different flavors within all of them, and I think that bears further review. So it's not just no or enhanced, you could slice and dice it in many ways, and I look forward to staff doing so. The corners, short-term parking, we've discussed these things, it will require more study. I, I do share a little bit of the concern that, because I don't know, you know, somehow a well-intentioned group of business advocates and developers' reps and others in the construction trade and residents has gotten together, but they've been meeting apparently with our consultants in a way that others don't have. They're here today, let's hear from them, but we're going to have other people, groups in the public weighing in when we bring this issue back after more thorough thought, and I just, you know, people should be treated across the board the same, so I get that concern. But we can hear them now, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singer.
Oh, so sorry.
Mr. Beer.
Oh, I just have one other comment, it's an excellent point to bring up. I think one of the other elements that we learned over time is Palmetto can't be looked at as an entire corridor, because it's very different elements, as you move from Crawford over to Federal Highway, then Federal Highway to Meisner, then Meisner to Fifth. So even within Palmetto Park Road, there's different elements and, and styles within each one of those portions of the corridor.
Thank you, Mr. Beer, for pointing that out. Mr. Thompson, any last words?
I, I was just going to say, I think we should be willing to accept any ideas from anyone, particularly folks who are residents and who have been investing their time into this, so I'm happy to hear alternative ideas, complementary ideas, whatever ideas you all have. We should be able to handle all of this, marinate on it, we're going to come back, no decisions are going to be made right this minute, so I'm happy to hear everything from anyone who cares, especially those who've dedicated as much time as some of these folks have, so I'm eager to hear their ideas too.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Okay, thank you both for your presentations, really appreciate it, and for all the information, we certainly have a lot to think about. Onto our next presentation. Mr. Brown, did you have some comments before we move on?
No, not, not particular, I just wanted to compliment Alta and staff for looking at these issues very thoroughly, from an engineering perspective, make sure that we're approaching things with maximum amount of available data.
Absolutely, 100%. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will move on to our second presentation today. It is Mr. Juan Casado and others presenting. And again, this was on, at the request of me, so.
Thank you so much for allowing us to take the time. I'm just going to start by saying I'm Andrea Oliviano-Rourke, I live at 100 Southeast Fifth Avenue in Boca Raton. I am not here speaking for myself, I am speaking for a group of, of volunteer professionals that, we have been working on this for three years, and I want to make it very clear to everyone, this was an initiative that this group brought forward. We would not be having this conversation today if this group did not bring this conversation forward in 19, in 2022. So thank you very much, we are taxpaying residents that are very involved and very concerned, very interested in the future, and I thank Alta for their presentation, and we did not get to, to collaborate with them until the week before last, actually. We were at several public workshops and, and we talked, but we never, ever had a one-on-one collaboration, which I didn't get to go to, but several of the professionals, volunteers that I'm working with did. So thank you for giving us this time, and, and we're going to go forward with the presentation and, and hope that you, you support the effort that we're making. It's all food for thought, it's not rebuttal, it's collaboration, so I, I hope that you understand that. We are a volunteer citizen collective on a mission to accelerate action in, let me just, let me just make sure I have this straight, yeah. So we're a volunteer citizen collective on a mission to accelerate action in the 344 acres of downtown Boca Raton and beyond, to cultivate walkability, connectivity, and placemaking, ultimately designing a poetic human experience. Our vision is for urban visibility that embodies the spirit and the true essence of Boca Raton. And I'm not going to name everybody, but I think you probably recognize most of these people, they have served on boards, advisory boards, planning and zoning, CAB, and this is only half of the group, some, it's, it's a tough time for people, every, mostly everyone is a working professional in the group, so with that, it's the top one. We cannot go forward, and I thank you for bringing up the, the speeding and, and the danger that we're feeling on Palmetto Park Road, it's real, and we, we have been spinning wheels since 1980, the mid-eighties on this. This came forward 37 years ago, it came back again 17 years ago, which I'm going to talk about in pretty, in some detail, 14 years ago, and again, three years ago in 2022, when this group brought this initiative forward. Again, we would not be discussing it had not, that not happened several years ago. Downtown has been analyzed on numerous occasions with the same result over and over again. Pedestrian, experts and residents alike want a pedestrian experience, they want to feel safe. So in 1983, the first Meisner Master Plan was created, a referendum was held, the citizens supported it overwhelmingly, and it was voted on to have a downtown master plan, 4035 was created, that is now our downtown bible. Moving on from that, in 1990, we continued to work on this downtown situation, so the Vision 90 was created, which ultimately turned into the Downtown Advisory Committee, and they did, they worked on creating infrastructure improvements, in capital improvements and beautification projects, and there were significant studies, at least three during that period from 90 all through the Downtown Advisory where Palmetto Park Road was looked at. Now, we've come up with beautiful, beautiful pockets in our downtown, we appreciate it, we love it, we go to all of them, Meisner Park, Sanborn, the Art Museum, the potential Center for Innovation, Plaza Real, Royal Palm Place, the, the Historic Society we have maintained, and that, these are all beautiful attributes to our downtown. In, in 2007, so we're out of the 1900s, in 2007, the city, if I'm not incorrect in saying this, I believe budgeted $1 million for this study in 2007, and they hired Urban Design Associates along with Gladding Jackson. And in 2007, the city rightfully believed that downtown had lost its way with respect to achieving the vision in 1982. So over a very intense five-month period, the consultants met with a diverse group of participants, there are probably here that even people here that remember it, residents who lived here for a long time, new residents, and they did smaller focus groups with developers, landowners, realtors, arts, art and culture institutions, heritage advocates, city staff, providers of emergency services, and the Federation of Homeowners, which represented hundreds of people. The red, we're going to talk about the green dots, the red dots, and the blue dots, we all know the dots. I don't, I'm not going to take a lot of time to go through this, Meisner Park is strong, Royal Palm is strong, Sanborn is strong, a little bit of the beach, you see Silver Palm, the, there is no, there's very few green spots on Palmetto Park Road, this has been a story over and over and over again. Red dots, where are the weaknesses? Palmetto Park Road, and again, the connectivity, that is what we've called the spine over the years, connectivity between Royal Palm and Palmetto Park Road. They said widespread support for making downtown more pedestrian-friendly, this is 2007, I don't, I'm not going to do the math of how many years after 1980. So widespread support for downtown pedestrian-friendly, and creating an identity, which was what we continue to call placemaking, and they, they looked at what their priorities were, and I'll just skip through that, because we have it right here. The weaknesses are not pedestrian-friendly, downtown lacks connectivity, Palmetto Park Road was identified, and the vision was to improve Palmetto Park Road East, and make it more pedestrian-friendly, and give it an identity, there's our placemaking once again. So I'm going to read this, because this is what creates the vision, and with all of the work that you all have to do, and, and Mr. Beer, and it's, it's no small feat, and we understand that, we, we're working with a lot of professionals right here. But we have to read and remind ourselves of what the original vision was, and this is in your downtown master plan right now, you can open the book up and read this. What is a pedestrian network? It's an essential element, it's successful to downtowns for an interconnected network of streets and open space that provides comfortable pedestrian connections. Boca Raton has a successful pedestrian pockets, but it fails to provide a pedestrian network that links its various parts. A particular vivid example can be seen on Palmetto Park Road, this is 17 years ago, where despite efforts to create a pedestrian-friendly environment, past programs have been unsuccessful in doing so. The emphasis given to through traffic, combined with road and sidewalk design that encourages vehicles to travel at a high speed, has made it impossible to provide this vital attribute. So in 2007, they proposed a redesign, which was tested, this is all in your, in your, in your downtown master plan, which was tested for Palmetto Park Road. And, and in ordinance 4035, it, it indicates the B, the type B streets and the type C streets, C is from Dixie to Meisner, and from Meisner to the B, to the bridge is a C street. So let's talk about the C street, and again, these diagrams are right out of your downtown master plan. What is, so a type C street is an access street. Type C streets are either three-lane streets or two-lane with a median. They provide vehicular access to homes and businesses, and have the highest level, highest level of activity and conflicts. As such, they should be designed to encourage lower-speed traffic and serve pedestrian-scale uses along them. These are two diagrams out of your, out of the master plan. The one on the left is, is a design with one lane going east, one lane going west, and a median. The one on the right, which we personally favor, is, is with an emergency, it's three lanes, an east lane, a west lane, and an emergency lane. I can break down, I can break it down quickly for, and it, it doesn't mean it has to be this, just, just happened to be a diagram in, in the master plan, but you have the 14 feet of pedestrian, you have the buffer, you have, and there's parking maintained here, eight feet of parking, and then 10, 11, and 10 feet of road, eight feet of parking, six feet of buffer and sidewalk, et cetera. So the, the recommendation, whoops, did I skip something here? No, sorry, let me just go back one page. I would read from up there, but my eyesight is not good. So, "The effects of creating a three-lane section of Palmetto Park Road between Meisner Boulevard and Northeast Fifth Avenue do not appear to be overly burdensome." This is out of the 2007 report, and everything we say is in all due respect to Alta and to the staff, we want you to understand that. We are here to collaborate, and we've been working on this for three years. We are here to collaborate, and we've been working on this for three years. So, back to the three-lane section. "The Boca Raton Downtown DRA report indicates 865 cars per hour in peak direction was expected by 2020. It's important to note that while in 2007, the peak traffic hour was anticipated to be 865 cars, today, four years later, it's actually 654, 211 cars less. The west peak was anticipated to be 729. It's, it is 729, 136 vehicles less than was anticipated. According to the city engineering staff analysis, the intersections on either end of the corridor, Palmetto Park Road at Meisner Boulevard and at Fifth, would operate no worse than a vehicle-level deservice under the proposed configurations. Even if this level of capacity were not available, reduced-peak-hour vehicle levels of service in downtown area are common and can even be desirable when trying to create a balanced environment. It should, as our traffic specialist said, it should hurt a little bit to drive through a downtown area. As indicated in the plan, the middle lane should have a different paving surface and would also be used for emergency vehicles or when this, when there is a vehicle stopped in a moving lane. It can also be a second stacking lane for cars waiting when the bridge is closed." We are throwing ideas out to you. We are collaborating with you, and we are sharing what was already indicated in your downtown master plan from the 2007 study. So, the recommendation was the public realm can be developed in one or two ways. The preferred solution is to reconfigure Palmetto Park Road as a three-lane road with parking on both sides. We commend, we personally commend the three-lane option in part because it provides the most flexibility for emergency vehicles in the event of blocked lanes. Again, out of your downtown master plan, and I can't tell you how many times when I sat up there like you, I went back to the downtown master plan, and I read this paragraph over and over because I couldn't put it together with the reality of what we were, how we were living. And the vision in your downtown master plan says, "This area has the potential to become the Champs-Elysees of Boca Raton with wide, well landscaped, garden-like pedestrian walks along the street that are lined with residential, restaurant, hotels, and business uses." It's important to point out right-turn lanes because we've put medians in, we've taken medians out, we've put lanes in, we've taken lanes out. This was, this is what came out of the analysis in 2007, and it's important to point it out. "The presence of dedicated right-turn lanes is anti-urban and anti-pedestrian with longer crosswalks and high-speed right turns, an element that typically is not based on capacity needs, but on preserving vehicle speed in moving lanes. Since a traffic signal timing would be set to a speed of 25 to 30 miles per hour, speed preservation should no longer be the goal." And I'm going to read one more thing out of our downtown master plan because, once again, it creates the vision of what we're looking for, for placemaking and walkability. We can talk about the studies. We can talk about the road. We can talk about utilities. That all has to be addressed, and we respect that, and we would love to collaborate with that. But you have to keep the vision in mind of what we're trying to accomplish. "The great cities of the world offer lasting continuity and unexpected joy. It is in the mix of buildings, the unity of landscape, the tight streets, the broad plazas, that we derive the notions of beauty of a civilized city. Many of the tests of city civility are rather simple ones. Can you walk on the sidewalk? Can you stop for a drink? Is there shade? Is there sun? Can you cross the street? And may I add, safely? And is there even a reason to cross the street?" So, I'm going to go, now we're to today, and thank you for giving us the time to just remind you of what we have been through in the past and what the guidelines and principles are in our downtown master plan. So, when we first looked at this in 2022, May 2022 is when I sat out there and helped make the presentation for this group. We looked at, we looked at all of Palmetto Park Road. We care about the beach segment. We care about downtown. We care about the west segment. But we knew we could only take a smaller bite of the elephant. We couldn't look at the whole thing. But I do want to take the opportunity, and particularly while you're focused on the government center, which we're very excited to hear about, there must be connectivity from downtown to the government center and the TOD. If that, if that doesn't happen, the whole thing will be another build in a silo. And needless to say, will actually hurt Meisner Park and Royal Palm as well, and Palmetto Park Road as far as business goes. So, so what happened was, this was a collaborative exercise. We had the opportunity, I think it was a week before last I was out of town. I didn't participate, but several of my colleagues here had the opportunity to sit down with staff and Alta for the first time and have a one-on-one, one-on-four, five-on-five collaboration. And what we learned, which came up in the study that we weren't aware of, is that Dixie and Palmetto is a major pinch point. So, what we did, in the spirit of collaboration, we went back to the drawing board because we're going to show you an idea that we think is exciting in a further plan. It's just more developed, and it's an idea to consider. So, we went back to the drawing board, and what we did is we looked at the segment of downtown, the pedestrian, high pedestrian and high-business part of this Main Street Boca Raton. And we drew it in from Meisner Boulevard to Fifth Avenue. And coincidentally, or not, maybe just smartly, that is exactly what was indicated in the 2007 downtown master plan, was to look at Meisner, look at the Palmetto Park Road from Meisner Park to the bridge to Fifth Avenue. So, we have to talk about the elephant in the room because we cannot have this conversation without talking about evacuation, emergency response, and safety versus perceived delays. So, we did our homework. We wanted to come to you with some statistics. And what we did was, we found out there are 6,854 residential units on the Barrier Island. And out of those six, over 6,000 units, half of them are occupied during hurricane season. We got that example from one of the condos, the Beresford, which is right on A1A, I think right near Palmetto Park Road. They have 53 units. They reported that 23 units are occupied during hurricane season, which is 43% of the building occupied during hurricane season. I anecdotally will tell you, I live by the water, and I can tell you, in hurricane season, the building is pretty empty. So, what we did is, we looked at the evacuation routes, and we have Spanish River Boulevard, we have Palmetto Park Road, and we have Camino Real. So, people are going to take the path of least resistance. If you live north, you'll probably take Spanish River. If you live mid, you'll probably take Palmetto. And if you live south, you will probably take Camino Real. So, that breaks down the numbers. If the total was 6854, and half are here during hurricane season, that's over 3,000. Now, if you break it down to a third, we're looking at 1,142 units evacuating or exiting through Palmetto Park Road in the case of an event. And it says, where am I here? "Palmetto Park Road, even with one lane heading west, can handle evacuation, even though evacuation does not occur at the same time." So, I catch my breath. I'm trying to do this as fast as I can because I know you didn't appreciate it. It is taking a huge amount of time. But this is very important to all of us, so thank you again. "Evacuation was analyzed." This is, again, back in the 2007 study. "This street is an important emergency evacuation route for island residents. A population of the size expected to be on the island could easily be evacuated over a two-to-four-hour period in two outbound lanes, in the case of weather or other type of emergency and depending on traffic control and street operation plans. A three-lane section would be, would allow this two-lane, would allow two-lane outbound type of operation to occur easily." There is, we have to remember, for emergency sake, there is a fire station on the Barrier Island for immediate attention to Barrier Island residents. Our EMS trucks are well-equipped. And with an exclusive emergency lane, which we stand behind that plan, emergency response will actually be expedited. The biggest elephant in the room, and it came up during Alta's presentation, are the statistics. 800, 1,868 crashes, 466 injuries, and six deaths. If you do the math, that is over one crash a day. And I'll skip the injuries for now. I didn't do that math, but that's one death a year. So, some people who are concerned about time and wanting to speed through a downtown, some people didn't have the opportunity to get home. I think that needs to be considered. And I heard numbers of nine minutes or something. We've done some studies. It's under, we have under-minute times. We have seconds. So, lives are more important than speeding to where you may be going. "Emergency response time is improved with an exclusive emergency lane. Removing two signals and replacing same with two roundabouts will actually reduce vehicle time traveled." Obviously, this is going to be a conversation that you will have. With that, I am done with my part of the conversation. I am going to turn it over to Juan Casado, who worked with several of our planners here to get, to tease you with a concept. And what I want to say is Juan's presentation is not only beautiful. I mean, this is, I mean, he focused on a fully-realized plan. Again, in due respect to Alta, we realize you were doing a major evaluation and data collection. But this is focused on a plan of these, Meisner Boulevard to Fifth Avenue. And not only is it beautiful, but it's memorable, and it's a nod to history, and it improves response time. Parking is maintained, and it's faster without signals. So, I want to say one more time, which I said in the study, in the presentation, it should hurt a little bit to drive through downtown Boca. We, quickly, Georgia and I went to How Ya Doin'? It just opened on Palmetto Park Road. It was delicious. But we were sitting outside, and I have to tell you, the screeching and the speeding and the noise and the level of what cars are doing on Palmetto Park Road in the heart of downtown Boca is disconcerting. Thank you so much for your time, staff, council, Alta. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Juan Casado.
Thank you, Ms. O'Rourke. I've already gone over by a minute and a half. So, Mr. Casado, the most efficient way you can go through this would be appreciated.
Juan Casado, I'll make it short. And actually, obviously, thanks to Alta, we have information that we didn't have before. And with that information, we actually went ahead and changed some of the things that we had proposed initially. Obviously, the design of a city, like some of you said, is not one piece. It's a bunch of cohesive pieces that actually come together to actually form our city. And we, as a group, have been looking at this for over a couple of years now. And we walked the city. We actually have done sketches over every space that we think that is important. And we actually, actually offer our services, our expertise, our knowledge to whoever is working on whatever project in the city to use us as a resource. We're not here to compete with anyone. We're not looking for the work. We're actually looking to improve our city and to make it actually a better, a more poetic, and more artistic, and more iconic city. So, this drawing, this sketch actually came out of one of the walks. And this actually, just to speak very shortly about it, the white piece that you see kind of in the middle of the drawing is the high line, so to speak, connected between the west, where the train station is, to the east, landing on Sanborn Square. The idea was actually to, is to create an iconic bridge that actually will connect the west and the east. And so, that's basically the sketch that reflects that condition. As we moved into other studies, we actually have looked at government center as well because we'd recognize that not only the Palmetto Park and the bridges are elements. Everything in the city is important for us, and we want to have an iconic city, a city that is a museum city for the future of our city. The fact of the matter is that all this data that is collected actually will be obsolete in a couple of years. It's obsolete now. As we move forward, as technology evolves, all of this technology, all of this data that we're collecting becomes obsolete very quickly. Whatever, however, what doesn't become obsolete is the art, is the poetic, artistic part of the city. And we see that in many cities of the world, Paris, London, Rome, you name it. All the elements that are in that city that became timeless and are part of the city still are those pieces that are part of the art component of the city. So, we want to make sure that whatever intervention we do in the city has that level of artistic intervention. So, when we looked at the city at Palmetto Park Road, initially, I'm going to go very quickly. This is a sketch that some of you have seen. We actually took inspiration on the beginnings of the city, the Venice of the Atlantic. Meisner, Meisner, Meisner wanted to create a Venice-like city here. And so, we thought, well, why not create an iconic street that actually borrows from that history and creates an element in our city that is, that becomes a landmark? As we looked into it, excuse me, as we looked into it and we learned that some of the traffic studies didn't support the proposal, we went ahead and did some additional studies. But this is just to show you, when we're working on these things, we're actually developing the idea. We're thinking of the three-dimensional, three-dimensional aspects of the street. We're seeing what is it, what is it that we're looking for? What kind of space are we looking for? What's the scale? And so, after all of that, we arrived at the last idea that we have, which is based on the last input that we got in terms of the street composition.
Okay, and I'm going to give you one more minute to finish up.
Yes, I'm almost done. This is actually, I think, one of the last images. This actually is, Meanderin Street actually has the three lanes. One is bound, one is westbound, and the emergency, the emergency vehicle lane in the center of the road. It actually provides ample pedestrian areas on both sides of the shoulders of the street. The lines that you see vertical crossing it actually are the crossing points for pedestrians. And actually, they will, they will actually, and the roundabouts, we talked about already. So, they could be in or could be out. I don't, it's not based on that component, but we had it in there because we, at some point, we discussed them, the three-lane section. And then, again, it's inspired on the same idea of the gondola, the Venice of the Atlantic of Meisner. But in this case, the gondola has actually happened on either side of the street, kind of creating this iconic element. Elevated crosswalks, part of the parking spaces, which is, we're not going to lose any parking from this design to what is currently existing. And then, the treatment of the roads could actually be similar to what Mark had mentioned at some point, which is pavers. And this is some quick sketches of what the sidewalks could look like. This is actually one of those gondolas on the side, which actually becomes benches with trellis on top. And there's a light of canopy is crossing the street. So, at each pedestrian crossing, there is plenty of light for safety reasons. And this is actually one section through that street showing that condition.
Okay.
With that, I'm finished. I went as fast as I could.
Thank you, Ms. Casado. Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. I think it just, like we said, adds some more ideas. I appreciate the history that you've brought to this. And I like to hear from everyone, so I appreciate you being here. Does anybody, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Casado? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. So, moving on, we have no quasi-dutual or related.
I do have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you. Sorry.
I think Mr. Wigder brought up, and I think the mayor already excused himself because I don't see him.
Sorry, Ms. Strucker. I didn't see you.
That we're going to need a process for how these ad hoc presentations come because we have, and I appreciate you guys coming and doing the presentation. I thought the timing could have been later, but it's great. We listened to it, and we're here. They're going to be working on the feasibility, and we want all public input, but everyone should have the same input. So, Mr. Wigder said earlier, there has to be a procedure. I think the mayor said, we don't want just ad hoc. Because if not, what I don't want to happen is just, I'm sure like the Barrier Island folks have a lot of input as well. They're not, I don't see, I don't see a lot of them here today. So, again, we need to make it a consistent, fair process for the entire city because we have, we have a staff that's very equipped and has been working on all of this. And we also have Alta, which we're spending a ton of taxpayer dollars, and we're going to go ahead and add more tasks. So, we have to come with a way to, and these are our consultants. So, I appreciate all the feedback. I appreciate all the enthusiastic, this is what I live and breathe pretty much as I've sat on this dais. But there has to be a way to do it with parity for all in the city because we're treating it different. There's no other, when we do public input, when we did our Vision Zero Action Plan recently, we just put it out, people showed up. We're going to have a few more coming up, and that's how you get public input. As I appreciate the 12 individuals that are here, they're obviously a former deputy mayor. Obviously, there's other residents that are here, but it's a lot of our development community as well. I want to hear from everyone, just not one particular group pushing policy or changes to our city. So, I'll leave you with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Mr. Wigder?
No, thank you. Listen, I love hearing ideas. Like I said, in terms of the process, we can work on that. You know, maybe there was a little bit. You know, maybe there was a little bit of a break for everybody during COVID. And I think what we are experiencing in many ways is still systemic of COVID, is that we are restarting a lot of processes that may have started before, and a lot of things just dropped out before. And I think it takes time to move a ship this big, frankly. There was a time in the past, former deputy mayor talked about it, where we had a downtown advisory committee, and that fell off. Maybe it's time we consider starting it again. We have many, and now with the new government campus master plan, we have many very large, as has been said, generational projects that are happening downtown. Maybe an advisory committee or a task force might be helpful. So, it's something to consider, because, again, if the only avenue, and certainly everyone in the public knows, you can email us, you can call us, you can text us, smoke signals, whatever, you know, whatever you want to do, we're always available. This is not the only opportunity to talk, you know, to talk to us at all. Please, you know, we get emails all the time. Happy to. I'm happy to walk the neighborhood with anybody who wants to walk. People know it. If you see a problem, take a picture, send it us, put us on, see, click, fix. But the point is, there's opportunities to get this engagement, and doing a lot of that here, and just very general conversations. Like I said, maybe we just need to have a public forum talking just about Palmetto, you know, another one, so we can do a task force. So, there's other opportunities for this, and I hope we can explore some of them, because it seems like there's a lot happening downtown, and it would be very, very challenging to do it all right here. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Wigder. Ms. Thompson? And certainly, just using this today as an example, I agree, we should have some kind of a process, but this hasn't been the only group that's come before us. We've had Florida Share the Road Coalition. We've had several people, Mr. Les Wilson is sitting in the audience. He's come and given us presentations, and that came from him reaching out to one or many of us and asking to be able to do that. So, again, certainly, there was 12 people here today who could have each taken three minutes each during public comment to do the same presentation, and that would have even been 36 minutes and not the 24 minutes that it ended up being. So, but I, going forward, if we want to talk about having a process to do something like this in a workshop, I'm amenable to that, and I'm open to the conversation. So, that being said, now, moving on, we have no business to consider under quasi judicial and related public hearings. So, now, we will open public requests, and anyone wishing to speak on matters concerning the CRA in the downtown, please come up. You will have three minutes to speak, and please state your name and address for the record. I have one card, Mr. David Kay. Thank you for being patient, Mr. Kay.
Thank you. I'm David Kay, 327 East Royal Palm Road, Boca. I want to just make a few points, hopefully quickly. I want to emphasize what, one thing that council, former council member O'Rourke said, when we are measuring the traffic delay of minutes or seconds against injury and life, we don't just want to say, well, there's 2,000 folks who want to speed through downtown Boca, and there's only 400 people who want to cross the street. I think it's necessary of a hierarchy of values that says people's health, safety, and life has to count a little more than traffic delays. The next thing I want to say is that there is a very, very dangerous pedestrian intersection that was not discussed, and I want to make sure the consultants and staff know about it.
Mr. Kay, can you speak into the microphone, just so we all hear you?
Yes, certainly.
Thank you.
Quite a few times, just within the last, let's call it, four to six weeks, I have almost been struck by fast-moving vehicles crossing Palmetto Park Road at Fifth Avenue, particularly on the east side of Fifth Avenue. The reason is, despite the walk sign, despite the fact that the crosswalk is set away from the corner, which means drivers should be facing the crosswalk, they, they speed around the corner at what feels like 45 or 50 miles an hour. Just two weeks ago, a large truck just reached to a halt inches from me. It isn't just the risk of injury, but it's also the discomfort and fear that creates. So, that intersection must be addressed. The next thing I want to talk about very quickly is what can be done right away at little cost. The crosswalks can be brightly painted. I'm told that's expensive, because we'd have to replace the pavers, and we'd have to get bright-colored pavers. And my response is, pull out the pavers, which are, which are almost invisible, put back asphalt, and paint it brightly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kay. Would anyone else like to speak? Mr. Ungin? I think congratulations are in order, too.
Thank you. So, if I can ask the chair for a little bit of leeway, I wanted to be here for the workshop. I was here, but I missed the public comment, so, being that we switched this in the last minute.
Okay, give you four minutes?
No, 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 I don't need more time, but just that if I could have a little leeway in terms of it not relating directly to the CRA.
Okay.
So, first, I want to start off with the Danberg, Jonathan Ungin, 6501 Congress Avenue. The Danberg concern next door. From what I understand, I spoke with the assistant city manager, city attorney, still waiting on a date. It's mind-blowing that we can't seem to get to any sort of resolution for a development that was promised to the city eight years ago. We're two, almost two full years from a final order in code compliance. And this does impact the downtown as well as the full city as a whole, because code compliance should bring quick enforcement, and code enforcement should bring quick compliance. And obviously, that is not happening next door. I'm hearing that their special magistrate hearing won't be until next year, early, in January or so. Still, they can't get their attorneys, apparently, to, from what I understand, to give a date that they could be made available. The clock just keeps ticking. This doesn't happen for anybody else, and it's very concerning. The other thing I would like to speak about is the Tri-Rail development. I've spoken to you, council member Naklis, you, Mr. Wigder. I've asked to speak to every council member prior to the last hearing, which gave the first approval before transmittal. I just had a baby, so I wasn't here at that last meeting, not me, but the wife. And so, but very disappointed to not have heard back from a few council members. I know that in that, I did hear and listen to that hearing, that comments that you've taken, you haven't heard from me, council member Drucker in specific. I wrote an email, I called the mayor, I've called, I've spoken to his assistant. I keep hearing, reach out to us, and you've already had one approval on this. And I want to speak to you all before you have your final approval, to consider everybody's property rights, everybody's development rights and density, because the reality of our Tri-Rail station is unlike many, many other large cities that we talk about TODs, where everybody who's going to be getting on our Tri-Rail is leaving this city. It is true. There's no other stop in the city of Boca Raton. And that's not the case in Miami. That's not the case in many other municipalities. And the other thing that I'd like to consider is, this is something that's made for just one property. It's giving them over 50%, 100% more density than anybody else. And the reality is, is 50% of these people living there in this high-income, you know, there may be some affordable housing, affordable is not too affordable in Boca Raton, under the parameters of the average median income. But 50% of these people aren't going to be riding the Tri-Rail every day, or any day. And so, with that, I'm just not sure why we're giving such a bonus. But more importantly, I'm asking that this city maybe considers the 20 units an acre that all the rest of the properties, especially in this district, are afforded right now. I'm not against them getting 42, but why shouldn't people on bus stops, this is TOD as well, be, get a higher density count? Because nobody can develop at 20 units an acre in the city of Boca Raton, afford these types. They're all passing density, giving up developmental density rights. I know you all understand, but the public may not. And that's all.
Please wrap it up, Ms. Ungin.
Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, I allowed that, because we did switch the CRA and workshop meetings today, and I'm not sure everyone in the public was notified with that. So, okay, any other public requests?
Madam Chair, can I address Mr. Ungin?
Yes, you may.
So, Mr. Ungin, well, you have heard, and I did say it in the last meeting you were not here, that I was going to be away at a, at a conference, and we've had a conversation, you and I, in this chamber. And I responded to you by saying that more density should be allowed in the transit-oriented community area. That is where density goes. That is the model that we've been following as a city. And I respectfully disagree with you that people are not going to take the Tri-Rail, they're just taking it to come in and out. I take the Tri-Rail to go to many places, just not to go out. I come in, I come out. I have to come right back to that station. Also, the people that are going to live in that particular development, their, their part of their rental package includes a mobility incentive. So, we can have many conversations, you want to hear what you want to hear, but I'm telling you what, the way that, the reason behind the decision to allow it in those transit-oriented development. So, for what it's worth, it belongs there. Mr. Ungin, it belongs there, that we've had this conversation. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Drucker. Are there any other public requests? Would anyone else like to come to the dais to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close public requests, and we'll move on to resolutions and regular public hearings. Ms. Sidens, could you please read the title of the resolution?
Resolution number 2024-08-CRA. A resolution of the Boca Raton Community Redevelopment Agency amending the rules of the Boca Raton Community Redevelopment Agency for individual development application IDA procedures for clarity and to delegate approval authority for IDA building permit review to staff for process efficiency consistent with ordinance number 5706, providing for separability, providing for appeal, or providing an effective date.
Thank you, Ms. Sidens. Mr. Brown, who will introduce the, who will introduce the presentation?
Actually, I'll give a brief summary, and if we have any questions for Ms. Sita, we can get to those. As mentioned in the title, the resolution amends the powers and duties of the CAB for consistency with ordinance 5706, which he adopted back on October 22nd. We had an extensive presentation about those. This conforms the CRA's powers and duties under the DDRI Development Order for Consistency with that Streamlining Ordinance, delegates to staff the current CAB authority to review building permits for consistency with IDAs. And it, CAB will no longer review building permit plans provided, assuming they were determined by staff to be consistent with the IDA. And it will restate the CAB's authority and review and make recommendations on certain downtown IDA applications. That's basically what this resolution does, adopts the previous ordinance requirements into the downtown DDRI, and Ms. Sita's here if there are any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Brown or Ms. Sita? No? Okay. So, no questions. Now, I'll open the public hearing, and if any member of the public would like to speak, you can come up to the dais, and you have three minutes to speak. Would anyone like to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to ask for a motion in a second to approve resolution number 2024-08-CRA.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Drucker and Mr. Wigder. Are there, is there any other discussion? Would anybody like to talk about this? No? Okay. Seeing none, Ms. Sidens, could you please call the roll?
Wigder?
Yes.
Naklis?
Yes.
Mr. Singer is absent. Drucker?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes, four votes to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Sidens. We have no other business to consider, so we're moving on to the director's report. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Chair. Ruby Riley, downtown manager, is going to give a brief update on downtown projects and current status.
Thank you, and welcome, Ms. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, for the record. Ruby Riley, downtown manager. Just have a few updates for you. I know it seems so long ago, but Hurricane Milton was around last month, and so, all the fun things we put out there, tables, chairs, and umbrellas had to be removed and stored until we got through the bad weather. So, we had to do that in Meisner Park, as well as Sanborn Square. And we also coordinated with our Recreation Services Department and our vendor that removed banners along Federal Highway. There were 86 of them, and luckily, we were able to get them reinstalled before they started their holiday light decorations. So, in Meisner Park, hopefully you have noticed, we have new paved game board for the chess and checkers games. And also, we have the paved area around the game board, so we won't be worrying about replacing dead grass when people are enjoying the game board, as well as the oversized Adirondack chair. It's now in a nice, sturdy platform, and we don't have to worry about dead grass and mud. Also, in Meisner Park, we did receive a new set of cafe tables and chairs that are out in the POA area now. And today, most of you were able to see it, we had a concrete footer poured and an art piece that was installed in the south end of Meisner Park, and we had the unveiling this morning. We also are finalizing the maintenance items with Brookfield, and our goal is to have the agenda items before you on December 9th and before council on December 10th. And in Sanborn Square, thanks to Recreation Services, the tree trimming has been completed in preparation of the holiday season and all the festive lighting that will be coming. Throughout downtown, we continue with paver repairs. We completed zones four and five, and we are remaining zones six and seven. Also, throughout downtown, we are continuing to explore options for the digital kiosks, and this is the one from Tampa. I don't know if you recognize that or not. We are looking at that one. And we are also reviewing with our legal department any issues that may come along with that typical type of signage that advertising is usually involved with. So, we are continuing to explore those options. We have not forgotten about it. It is still on the burner here, and we are looking into it. And that concludes my update, unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Brown, still your report?
Thank you, Chair Naklis. Stephen Timberlake, Financial Services Department, is going to provide an update on parking for businesses in downtown that have no onsite parking, particularly speaking about First Avenue.
Good afternoon, Chair. Stephen Timberlake, Special Projects Manager for the Finance Division. As we said, we're going to do our public parking in downtown update for November, looking mainly at northeast First Avenue. So, on this particular street, there are 26 spaces. We had about 21,000 transactions on the street alone, totaling about $70,000 in revenue. Average time purchase is an hour and a half, and a lot of transactions at 30 and 15 minutes throughout everywhere, totaling about 21,000 for there. This is sort of an overview of how this, how the street looks, with 26 spaces, 10 parking signs, five parking meters, and park mobile active for every single space. So, what we want to talk about today is a pilot program for a 29-minute free parking zone on northeast First Avenue. This pilot is prompted by feedback from a particular business owner who claims that parking meters are negatively impacting their business. Our objection- Our objective here is to ensure our parking program supports the downtown businesses by providing accessible parking for customers, maintaining ease of access, and avoiding excessive costs. As part of the goal, we'll test a short-term program here with a no-cost that facilitates quick businesses for local, or quick trips for local businesses. So, there are some risks associated with the program. We would obviously lose the $2,100 worth of transactions that are 30 minutes or less. And there is the potential for abuse by drivers re-entering 29 minutes over and over again at the meter, so that could impact turnover. Also, anytime you change one particular street, not the whole area, it could drive additional space occupation for that one area. So, a 29-minute free parking option added to the downtown spaces on northeast First Street. Patrons would select the free rate at any meter. They could use the Park Mobile app as well, but they would still pay a 30-cent transaction fee. Patrons could choose the regular rates, up to four hours, or the preset time limit for free. We would limit the availability of this option during normal business hours. So, how does it look? So, during, if you walk up to the meter, that's the initial screen. You enter your space number. And then, once you get there, once you have your space number in, you purchase a ticket, and then you select whether you want the normal per-hour rate or the 29-minute free parking. And once you select the free parking, it will give you what your amount due is, and then it will print out a ticket for you that you do not need to return to your car because we have it automatically based on your space number. So, our next steps will be launched, we'll be launching this trial if approved. We'll do a three-month trial to get us through the end of this year and into next year. And then, we'll monitor the impact tracking key metrics such as spot utilization, the activity in the businesses, what we see in revenue collection, and then enforcement as well. After the trial, we'll collect feedback from a broader range of businesses up and down the street to evaluate the effectiveness and determine next steps and bring those back to you. So, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Timberlake, and thank you for coming back. I just wanted to let everyone know, and you've probably all spoken to this business owner, there is a business owner on First Avenue who has, they've had their business there for decades, and they have no other parking other than this on-street parking. And so, the parking meters were put in, obviously, after this business had been in business for a very long time, and they're affecting his business, or so he claims right now. So, I know we had this discussion before, and Mr. Timberlake is going to a conference in December, I believe, where he's going to be coming back to us with some other options as far as the parking meters and timing and everything. But I do appreciate coming back with this option today. So, if anyone has questions, I think Mr. Thompson raises his hand first, and Mr. Wigder? Go ahead.
Excellent work, Mr. Timberlake. Thank you. I remember you mentioning the concept that there could be abuse if people put in the 29 minutes repeatedly. Is there not a mechanism to get the one free 29-minute segment and then no more?
There is not a mechanism because we don't, we don't know that you're a new person when you walk up to the meter. You walk up to the meter, you enter spot 1001, and 29 minutes later, you come back and enter spot 1001. I don't know that it's the same person, much less the same car. But if you miss it by 15 minutes and you end up with a $35 ticket, it's not going to make much sense for you to continue to do that. You're better off just paying the $4 for two hours in that scenario.
Let me, with your permission, Madam Chair, what about people who use the Park Mobile app? A lot of times, people will go, they'll sit down to eat, and they'll be like, oh, no, my meter's about to run out. Let me add more time. Can we at least eliminate the possibility of people renewing it on their Park Mobile app? Because in that case, you do know it's the same car.
We can certainly investigate that. I don't know for sure whether that's availability or not. But again, they're going to pay 30 cents for every transaction on the Park Mobile app too, so it's not free for them, so to speak.
Nevertheless, still worth it, my guess is that.
Yeah, we can investigate that.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks very much for looking into this. In terms of Mr. Thompson, I think you're already correct. I think, because I use the Park Mobile app often when I'm downtown and I can't get to a garage. I think if you put the max amount of time, the four hours, I think you're not allowed to extend that time. So, perhaps there's a software opportunity where you could reduce it for that. Yeah, my only concern, of course, is that to still have to put in your credit card for free parking.
No, you don't. You literally select free parking and hit accept, and it prints your information at the meter.
Oh, I thought there was something on the presentation about a 30-cent transaction.
If you're in Park Mobile where you have already entered your credit card information, because that's what Park Mobile runs off of, it's a 30-cent transaction fee. If you walk up to the meter, you would simply follow the steps I associated. There's no credit card, there's no payments. It is truly free parking for 29 minutes.
So, only the Park Mobile, so if you use, if you want free parking, don't use the app.
Go directly to the meter. That's correct.
Go directly to the meter. Okay. Public notice. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wigder. Ms. Drucker? Okay. Okay, so, we're looking for some direction on whether to move ahead with this pilot. So, I, do I have to make, does there need to be a motion in a second? Or just a voice?
Godspeed.
Is there consensus among everybody? Notting heads?
I see consensus.
Notting heads, okay. All right. So, I see everyone.
So, we will get that live, hopefully, by the end of this week, and then signage probably in the next two weeks, so everyone can see that we're doing it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Timberlake. Appreciate it. Again, thank you for your patience as well.
Madam Chair, just a point on that, though. Perhaps the most often-heard complaint I hear about downtown is, I just want a cup of coffee. Like, I just want, you know, I just need to get something for, you know. So, I appreciate the pilot program, I really do. The idea is, I'm sure First Avenue is not the only one where they're feeling it. So, hopefully, we can move to other areas if this pilot program is successful. Thank you. Appreciate it.
It's a step.
Thank you. It's a step.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Brown?
Nothing else this afternoon. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Kahler, any report?
No report, thank you.
Okay. Now, on to my fellow commissioners' reports. Vice Chair Thompson, any report?
No report, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Drucker?
Yes, I'm going to go ahead and put up the NLC, so we can do that today. And I'll go through it quickly.
Okay.
They could queue it for me. So, as I said, I went to the National League of Cities representing the city of Boca Raton. I sit on a couple of contingency pilot, I mean, not pilot, constituency groups. One in transportation and infrastructure, Hispanic elected officials and women in municipal government, and they were celebrating the 100th year. This conference moves around the entire country. So, there are municipal electors from all over the country, not just Florida or just not from here. So, I'll go over some of the stuff that I participated for the whole week, pretty much. So, that's how they welcomed us. They have a lot of connectivity, mobility. Like I said earlier, I did about 15,000 steps a day, the entire, every time that I was there. Just walked everywhere and took transit anywhere I could take. Obviously, I flew on Silver. I know sometimes it gets a bad plug, but it is another form of transportation. And these are some fellow commissioners from Miramar, so they were on our plane. But this is what I'm really excited about. I haven't shown anyone. So, they have an infrastructure hub, and in it, obviously, you see the entire state. And I think this cut out our star, because I don't know, the presentation has this border. But if you click on it and you touch Florida, then you would see that we were two cities, Gainesville from the last award and Boca Raton. And I have the picture where you can actually see, and I'll be posting. But everybody was asking us about, or me, about the grant program. How did you do it? How did you get there? And I had Mr. Beer give me some data as well when I got invited to sit at the Bloomberg philanthropy session with other cities from across the country, some that are just like about 1,000 residents. And then, you had us at 101, or you had Savannah, what, 300,000. So, really cool experience. That's my policy committee. This gentleman here is a commissioner in Emeryville, California, that I met a few years ago at NACTO. But if you want to see some cool stuff on biking, his city's 10,000 residents only in California, close to Oakland and San Francisco, and what he has done for bike safety and being carless, like carless area. He's also going to be our keynote speaker at Safe Streets Summit, that the entire council is invited to attend this year. Palm Beach hosts, so the TPA is hosting, and the conference will be in February. And I hope some of my colleagues would attend, and you'll get to hear everything that he did in infrastructure. I also spent a little bit of time on women in municipal government, just understanding all the different changes that have happened, concerns about usually the education and children, banning of books, and this is all at the national level. So, concerns that other cities have that we also have in this group is a caucus of only women. There is a mayor, Mayor Castor from Tampa, and some of the league, you know, representatives that were there this week. Some of the speakers that came in and did all these inspirational speeches, and then there were breakout sessions. This woman, I wanted to bring this, I thought it was a feel, it's a sad story, but it's also a story of what we take our pledge, right, to do this job. So, Jeanne Taylor was married to Mayor Brent, who, Mayor Brent Taylor, from Utah, who was an active military and was actually a mayor when he got called back in. And he basically passed away a couple of days before his 40th birthday. And she has now become a huge advocate of just everything city-related, and she sits on all these boards in Washington. They have seven children, they have seven children. And she said, she said it best, and you could go on to National League of Cities, because we're a member city, so anybody on the dais can listen to everything that was presented. But she said, "We'd best honor those who have been willing to give their lives for us by making something of honor out of the lives they have given to us." The story was, if you have the time to go back and listen to her keynote, it was profound. These are some of our vendors, some of other electors in the area. I went to the expo, trying to get new ideas on everything. They present on transportation, but also everything. It could be parking, it could be plants, it could be anything that touches the city. So, that was a cool. This is a roundtable that I got invited to sit on. And then, I was bringing some stuff, because it's amazing how they're able to change all their traffic patterns, close out streets. So, this is where I stayed at the hotel, and this is right across from the arena. And I happened to be there two nights that they had the Tampa Bay Lightning playing. And literally, they just closed down roads, shut things down, and they're still getting police and fire in and out. They're evacuating people if necessary. This is a huge arena, and I took a bunch of pictures. This is me and one of the Cirque Multimoto with fellow electors from different parts, actually, one from Boynton. Then, I went to this luncheon, which I don't know if you guys are familiar with Judge Judy Hatchett. And she just did an incredible presentation about purpose, power, and passion as an elected official, and she's a judge, so that was a cool thing. That's also, they recorded it, so I'm sure you could take that. And then, I happened to stumble upon this on my walk, which was, they closed the street for their tree lighting. So, this is where they had their tree lighting, in the middle of the downtown, and they closed the street off at 5 o'clock, it's 5:00 to 11:00. And they just had people walking up and down, and everybody was getting in and out, and all the bars along the right side, they were all full of people just sitting, because you could sit on that, like, kind of, you could sit like on Palmetto Park Road, and then you could just kind of enjoy everything that was happening, talk about pedestrian, and just connectivity and walkability there. I think I have a few of those. We also have to vote. We had to vote. I was a voting delegate, and the gentleman on the left, Greg Legowski, he was running for leadership for National League of Cities. And it's very funny, they set it up like if you were like in the electoral college. So, then, at night, they had a really big street party, and they also had the NLC Centennial Celebration with The Temptations that performed, and it was very cool to see that. Those are duplicates. I think we might have duplicate, am I going backwards? Wait, maybe it was me. My apologies. And then, this is some of our delegates that came from this area in Palm Beach. This is an interview, which I'm going to hold off for a second. What I don't see on the slides, which it's okay, because I can have them put them for tomorrow, all the Vision Zero. I had sent them to Angel, but maybe they didn't make them in, and I didn't review this yet. But I'll show you all the Vision Zero improvements, and I apologize, because I want to thank Angel. We put this together really fast, but we missed all the slides on the Vision Zero that I want to present. So, I'll do that tomorrow night, and you can queue this. I think it was, I haven't heard it, but this was.
As we come to a close, we're reminded that the NLC Centennial City Summit is an epic celebration of strengthening cities, towns, and villages from 1924 to 2024. What would you say is one adjective or one feeling that you're going to leave this conference with?
The one word that comes to mind right now is, there was a word that on good times, dynamite, to explode in my city like never before.
I'm a youth engagement manager, so attending some of the youth delegate sessions was really great, and then seeing them come to other sessions, too.
I think the best class I took right now was economic development class, moving your city to sustainability, and having the great ideas from smaller cities and big cities all working together, just gave me a lot of energy, a lot of motivation to go back and do my job very well.
I am here painting a live mural, so I'm inviting visitors to the conference to paint this 100-year anniversary mural with me. And the mural is actually going to go back and live in the NLC offices in Washington, DC, where I am from. So, I'm very proud to be a part of this.
From the food, to the people, to the bands, the vibe, everyone is amazing. Just to be down here and experience like being in Florida for the first time is just amazing.
The highlight is I just left after Women Municipal Government Lunch, and Judge Hatchett was the speaker, and she left us with so much inspiration.
And she just gave the most inspiring speech to us women, to be bold, to dare, to lead with, she said, "Purpose, passion, and power."
I'll say, I really just enjoyed the exhibit hall, just now, getting to meet with the different vendors and getting to learn about some of the innovative takes that other cities are using.
So, at this point, I just feel a little more prepared to go back, back home in O'Gallows, Arizona. So, hopefully, I'll use some of these tools that I put in my toolbox now to try to help the community.
One thing we're excited about is that NLC is the body. We're here to support the body. I say, each constituency group within NLC, they're supporting cities, they're supporting the work.
And I would say that there is a place for every council person, every mayor, that wants to take their leadership to the next level. NLC is the place where you can find that and receive that. And congratulations on 100 years of success.
So, my takeaway for your fellow council members is that conference next year is going to be in Salt Lake City, Utah, and I hope some of you will join me there next year. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Drucker, and thank you for your continued advocacy, both locally and nationally, and you are our transit champion, so thank you. Mr. Wigder?
Thank you. Mr. Brown, just quickly, one quick question. In order, as we consider the 4035 extension, my understanding from our conversations over the last few weeks and months has been that we would probably have to do a new traffic study in conjunction with that in order to corroborate a lot of the data that's been discussed by our engineers and by our visitors and the groups with a lot of the things that they were considering as we consider extending and changing the OEs and those things that we'd be, you know, in order to analyze that and determine what the capacity is, we'd have to see how it's being used. We'd have to do a traffic study. Is that your understanding? Or could you please explain it to me?
Yes, that's correct. We would have to analyze not just traffic, development patterns, availability of land, density and intensity. All of those factors are going to have to be looked at, because we will really be not extending what we have, but creating something new. Because I don't think that we will have OEs, per se, like we have them now in the future. We'll have some other measure of density and intensity.
Right. So, certainly, as people bring up their own data, when we do official studies, it will either corroborate, or it'll just clarify, really, right, what the data's showing and we're planning around the official data.
That, and the historical facts that lead up to where we are and where we're going to be going.
Appreciate that. And just, you know, on the top of my mind, you know, a lot of reports tonight on various subjects, you know, I don't want to discount, you know, we talked a lot about evacuation routes and hurricanes and things like that, but I don't want to discount the importance of people getting to work in a reasonable period of time. And I assume that there are many, many people who live on the Barrier Island or whatnot that still have to use Palmetto to get to work every day. It's not just for emergency purposes. So, certainly, it's something we're going to be considering, and our engineers, and I thank them. I just have a couple.
Mr. Wigder, if I may, just to follow on to your comment, a couple of comments in general about Palmetto Park Road. I think we always have to remember that is, in South County, it is the only road that goes from the ocean to the Range Line, to 441 and beyond. It's the only continuous connection. And we want to have a vibrant downtown. I think that if we create a situation where there is so much traffic building that people can't get to downtown anymore, they'll decide that it's not worth the trip. We have to be sure that we have the ability for them to get to the downtown as well as move around within it. And I think it's also important to remember that the data showed that about 50% are people coming in or going out, not staying around and moving. So there's a lot of traffic in and out of downtown that has to be accounted for as well as we look at the design and then future of Palmetto Park Road. Evacuation, yes, that's a, it's a rare occurrence, but daily travel, daily travel in and out of downtown for business purposes, work purposes, shopping, whatever else it may be, we have to make sure that we have available capacity for people to move at a reasonable speed in reasonable time. Just comments, thank you.
Appreciate it. Like I said, if we could use this data and, you know, and tie it into our circuit efforts and those other things certainly would help, because like we said, if our circuit is limit, is really supposed to be people starting in downtown or going in and out of downtown, hopefully, if people start to use it, they'll be able to reduce some of those items, right? We talked about this specifically, I think Councilmember Nakles talked about it, the parking on the bike lane policy, if we have one, or we should maybe consider one. This is, of course, northwest Second Street, I was driving by it the other day, and it's something that we started to see. It is the bypass in our downtown is northeast Second Street, right? So it's specially painted, it's beautiful, I use it, except the cars are using it, too. So maybe we can consider what they do up north, alternate side, or one-side parking only, or something like that. We talked about.
Mr. Wigder?
Yes?
That vehicle was in violation of the city code.
Oh, what is the, what is the rule?
You can't park on the paved street. Bike lane is part of the paved street. This happens all over town, all the time, and Police Department manages it as best we can.
Is there no parking permitted on this street at all?
They can park in the swale, which is the unpaved portion of the roadway, but cannot have a vehicle parked on the sidewalk, bike lane, or roadway.
Okay, yeah, maybe we could do signage or enforcement. Thank you for that. I was downtown at some function the other day, and of course, we talked about this so much. I saw the Boca Connect passing by, and so I stopped my meeting to go take a picture of the little bus. I didn't take a picture of the person coming out, and the person coming out was holding their lunchbox. And so, their little lunch bag thing, and I thought that was important, because this was a person either coming to or going to, coming from or going to work. Right, it was in the afternoon, so it's coming, coming from work. So I said, "It's getting there. This is about promotion, this is about people using it. And once they realize how easy it is to use and how beneficial it is, they will start using it." So like I said, when you see a picture like this, you know, you can appreciate that that our efforts are being useful. Like I said, we're talking about all these things with innovation and whatnot. There was an article in the paper about, obviously, you know, we talk about the Boca Connect. In the city, we have Guidant. But when we talk about preparing for the future and generational changes, article in the paper the other day, Waymo has driven more than 20 million miles and 2 million rides without a serious accident. Guidant, of course, is testing this at BRIC. You see them around in the parking lots at FAU and near the Airport Authority over there. They're testing their vehicles and stuff like that, so the technology is getting there. And likewise, we'll be planning with them as the future comes, but it is, it is already happening now. So like I said, if we can get to that point where you have downtown Waymo robotaxis, I can't even believe I'm just saying those words, but that it could happen. And of course, it will help alleviate accidents, and it's already happening now. So hopefully, you know, things that we can consider with our partners that are doing it in Boca Raton.
Mr. Wigder?
Yes?
On that note, at the FAU Tech Runway Awards the other day, the head of Guidant came up to me and said that actually Ms. Strucker had helped introduce him to someone in West Palm Beach, and that there is a project that came out of that. So he was appreciative of that, and he, they are really wanting to do something in the city that they're in Boca Raton. And I had mentioned it to Mr. Brown, so he was gonna talk to, I think, Mr. Beer, because I think there was some conversation also about not just the autonomous vehicles, but also they have the little robot things that can patrol in certain areas. So some kind of project that we can look forward to in the future would be great. Oh, Ms. Strucker has something else on?
And also, when I took a tour to Orlando, yeah, they have an area, I'm not gonna remember the name now off the top of my head, it's kind of like a brick. And it's a new city that they kind of like created from like parking lot. And now they have that car just taking you around, like the ones from Guidant, because they also work with another company that's up there in Orlando. And if anybody on the council wants to ever get connected to any of these individuals, I could do the intro and you take it from there, so you could have a one-on-one as well. So a lot of, a lot of movement around this type of rides, and also vertiport, which is the helicopter pads. And I didn't give an update today on Florida League of Cities, which I'll do tomorrow, because I was there the prior week, and I haven't put that report together, but really cool things coming out, but we're looking at legislation, so, yeah, it's very cool.
Awesome. Now, thank you for saying all that. Listen, like I said, there's so many opportunities, different ways of mobility, it is happening. You know, hopefully, we could work with the staff and with Guidant or other providers to work on the right location for a pilot program of this nature. Maybe literally it's just, like I said, Meisner Park and a little downtown, or maybe it is literally Palmetto from, you know, the government campus to the beach. I'm not sure, you know, we could work with the parties like Connect. You know, Connect gave us their recommendations, right? They're the experts, they're doing this in 100 cities, they gave us their recommendations. Maybe the companies like Guidant or Waymo can give us their recommendations on where they think is the best place to do a pilot program like this, maybe on FAU campus, someplace. But certainly, when I see something like this, I know that, you know, it'll be adopted, right? When you see this level of traffic and accident reduction, you know it's technology that's gonna be adopted sooner rather than later. So it's exciting that the conversation's happening. Finally, and we talked about that's the future, respecting our past. There was a new exhibit, there's a couple exhibits, there's one at the museum, of course, with Baroque Spain, but it also separates, celebrates our centennial, which is beautiful. I recommend everyone to see it. And also, there's a new exhibit at the Historical Society. It's an Addison Meisner exhibit about our history. A couple of us were there, Councilmember Nakles and I were there. And I've spent time with the curator Susan Gillis, and looked at a lot of the old minute books, you know, I'm a book nerd. And so, all the old minutes, the original minutes of the city, they're there. And so I was whipping them out and talking to Councilmember Nakles about that. And the original minutes when we were chartered are around there. So it's interesting to see our Boca Centennial. So I've talked about this a little bit in the past, but I'd like my council members to consider, you know, we've been talking about a lot of events for our centennial, I'd like my council members to consider, maybe we can have a special meeting around the date of our chartering, and maybe we can have it at the Old Town Hall, in the original council chambers. I think it should be a noticed special meeting, maybe we can have an agenda. Of course, it'll be ceremonial in nature, maybe we could read a portion of the charter, something like that. We have time to talk about this, let's get some ideas. Of course, not to date you, Mr. Brown, but I, but I know, you've showed me many times that your office was in the original city hall, I believe. Were they in the council chambers or close by?
Yes, in the northwest corner of the building.
In the northwest corner of the building, so before the, before the original, I guess before the second city hall.
Before the 1964 city hall.
Yeah, before the 1964 city hall. But, so anyway, we have a lot of history there, and it would be, and it's just something I think about. It would be nice to honor that history in one way, to have a ceremonial meeting at some point, a special meeting, and I hope my colleagues will consider that, and we can, you know, talk about it with staff about the right way to do this and publicize it. Oh, and if it's televised, it should be in black and white. But anyway, there's so many events going on right now in the season, you can't list them all. It's, go to my Boca US, see what's going on. And of course, you could, as we always said, email us all your concerns all the time. We're happy to listen, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wigder. So I'd like to thank Downtown Manager Ruby Riley for putting together, as she always does, an update for the next couple of weeks in the downtown. On November 23rd at 6:00 PM, the City of Boca Raton's Holiday Tree Lighting is this Saturday at the Meisner Park Amphitheater. Bring the family for live musical performances, a craft station for the kids, selfie opportunities, costume characters, a holiday market, and food and drink for purchase before the ceremonial tree lighting by Mayor Singer. This event is free and open to the public, learn more at meiseramp.com. On November 23rd at 7:30 PM, looking for a one-of-a-kind experience in downtown, The Studio at Meisner Park presents Cold Case Live: How to Solve a Murder. The show will feature an in-depth analysis, firsthand insights, reenactments, and more during an evening of shocking revelations as host Joe Kennedy from The Real NCIS and stars TV Wrong Man takes audiences behind the scenes and walks them through the process of solving cases. Get your tickets now at thestudiotmeisnerpark.com. On November 24th at 7:00 PM, the Meisner Park Amphitheater will host the FAU Wind Ensemble, the Marching Owls, the Jazz Orchestra, and the Chamber Winds for FAU Band Orama. Bring your blankets and chairs and enjoy a great concert. More information can be found at meiseramp.com. And here's what's coming up at the Funky Biscuit. November 24th at 5:30 and 8:30, Carl Fisher's Sunshine City Brass. November 29th at 5:00 PM, this, the Friday Happy Hour with Toucan Blue. November 30th at 7:00 PM, Southern Blood. December 6th at 9:00 PM and 7:00 PM, guitarist Mike Zito. And get your tickets at funkybiscuit.com. December 1st at 5:00 PM, FAU presents their annual Tuba Christmas at the Meisner Park Amphitheater. Stop in for this free holiday performance featuring an ensemble of tubas and euphoniums. Learn more at meiseramp.com. December 5th at 5:00 PM, Bark in the Park at Meisner Park is finally here. Rescheduled from earlier in the fall due to inclement weather, it's a perfect opportunity for you and your four-legged friend to enjoy pet-friendly photo booths, a DJ, caricature artists, a chance to win a downtown Boca gift basket, food for purchase, and even a pet psychic. Visit the Meisner Park Facebook page at facebook.com/meisnerpark for tickets and more information. December 4th at 7:30 PM, the City of Boca Raton's Annual Holiday Street Parade takes place along Federal Highway from southeast Fifth Street to just north of the Meisner Park Amphitheater. Get there early to claim your good seats, and please be aware, Federal Highway will be closed from Camino Real to Glades Road from approximately 5 to 11:00 PM that evening. Learn more about the parade at myboca.us/communityevents. December 6th at 7:30 PM, celebrate the holidays with country music artist David Nail as he brings his Campfire Christmas Tour to the studio at Meisner Park. Known for his deep emotive voice and blend of traditional and contemporary country sounds, Neil has had several successful singles, including Let It Rain and Whatever She's Got. Get your tickets now at thestudiotmeisnerpark.com. And finally, December 7th at 7:00 PM, the Symphonia and the Florida Atlantic University Chorus will bring the magic of the season to the Meisner Park Amphitheater stage with their Holiday Pops Concert. Tickets can be found at meiseramp.com. Thank you, Ms. Riley, for sharing those. I have a photo up here since we last met. I attended, along with my colleagues, the Boca Raton Museum of Arts ribbon cutting for the opening of Splendor and Passion exhibit. It's a fantastic exhibit, one that you would see in any huge museum in any very large city, so it's definitely worth going to. There's also the opening, as Mr. Wigder said, of the Historical Society's exhibit of Addison Meisner's legacy. The red-white Boca celebration on Veterans Day in Meisner Park was just fantastic. It was, Meisner Park was full, it was a beautiful day, and everyone who put that event together did just such a great job. So congratulations to our staff. This weekend, I saw the rock band OAR, and you can see a picture of the amphitheater there. There was about 3,000 people or so there, and it was a beautiful night. And I was just really standing up there and watching all the people and listening to the music on this gorgeous night. It really, it really solidified what I love about this area, and I was very happy to get there, to see that. And then finally, today, we put this picture in really quickly, Ms. Riley mentioned it earlier, the downtown Boca sign was unveiled, so please go and take some pictures with it and tag us on your social media, tag us with the hashtag downtownboca. A reminder to please visit downtownboca.org and download the My Boca app, keep up with all the happenings downtown and to report concerns. Please take the downtown mobility survey on the My Boca website, and please ensure that you have the Circuit app on your mobile device to access the free Boca Connect Shuttle in the downtown. A reminder to please visit and support all of the businesses in the downtown, especially the many small locally-owned businesses and restaurants in the downtown. And of course, if you have any ideas you'd like to share with me or anyone on the council, please reach out to me at fnakles@myboca.us, or everybody else's emails, or give us a call, we'd love to hear from you. And finally, I'd like to wish our son Alex a very happy birthday today. And with that, and no other business to come before us, this meeting is adjourned at 5:12 PM.